If you would, could you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. I have one change to the agenda. It's under recognition. The addition of excellence in communications recognition that the town of Waxaw received will present that tonight. And I just asked for some flexibility on the first one with Sergeant Roger Cohn. He's in the other room. He may, whenever he gets here, will conduct you. So with that, I'll take a motion. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comments. Okay, this is public comments regarding topics on the agenda. Keep in mind that your comments are limited to three minutes. First up, Mary Sargent. Mary, are you here? Mary's not here. Connor Sargent, are you here? Not. Bonnie Resenko, I know you're here.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Resenko and I live at 2501 Providence Road South. And I really think this is a first. This is the first time, I think, in a very long time that I have stood before you and actually agree with something they're getting ready to do. And that is a first for me. Okay? I think that the information that has been going out on Facebook has really been misinformed. And I know that there's a helluva loo going on, and I know that people are up in arms and under the, they're hot under the collar, and just thinking that the BOC wants to ban food trucks. And I thought at first, if that's what they're gonna do, I'm, I don't want to ban food trucks. But I actually read the ordinance and realized that you're not banning it. What you want to do is regulate it to protect the right-of-way on our streets. And I am all for it. Now, I do understand that the state, our highways, Highway 75, Highway 16, and I think West Norman, Maine, are state-regulated highways. And they have a right-of-way, and they have the same ruling. No food trucks can be parked on the right-of-way. And it's a safety issue. They have said it's a safety issue. If they're putting it up as a safety issue, then why would we not want to do the same for our Waxaw streets? It's a safety issue. It's not a ban against food trucks. I'm not against the food trucks because I'd be the first one to be there to get a snow cone, a hot dog, a hamburger. And I am usually the first one when they have the special events that have the food trucks. It's just that I don't want to see them peppered throughout our Waxaw. It does not look good. And I, we're not talking about one truck. It could be several trucks. If you let one truck in, you have to let several trucks in, not just one. And a truck usually takes up two to three parking spaces. You know that, I know that. Now, if it's on private property or around someone that needs it, and it's on private property, that's fine. It's private property, just like at Lowe's, they have the taco truck, I think. And that's fine. But why would you want to put it into our parking spaces downtown Waxaw? We have a shortage in parking spaces, if you're not aware of that. And I know they had a parking study, and they said there was no problem with our parking. Well, I really don't think they took a good look at Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and sometimes all day Sunday. This issue is not about picking on one establishment that wants or needs a food truck. As stated in many of the Facebook, and I don't do Facebook, but people have called and said, "Did you read this? Did you see that?" I didn't, but I've heard that it's, they are saying that we're picking on one establishment. I really don't think that is the truth. We are not picking on establishments. What we're doing is protecting our streets. And the people that are saying that are being misinformed. Read the ordinance.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. Next up, Blanca Hernandez, 4204 Chanko Court.
Hello. Yes, 4204 Chanko Court. I have been living in Waxaw for more than two years. I live actually here in Lawson. And two out of those four years, I've been saving to assemble a food truck. It's a really nice, new-equipped, beautiful food truck. And it's gonna be ready in July. So of course, when I read the post on Facebook, I was worried, and my family and friends were worried as well, because they really want to support my dream of a food truck. I decided to start a food truck because I didn't see very many options for working moms when they were coming back and wanted to pick up something quick for their families because they didn't have a chance to cook at home. So I also started the idea of the food truck because I want to give those women an opportunity to also become entrepreneurs, food entrepreneurs, which will later on lead into developing a commercial kitchen in Waxaw for entrepreneur mothers. But I guess that would be another meeting and another subject. But with my food truck not being able to find a parking spot here in Waxaw, that just puts a very big obstacle, or might push us to go somewhere else and not stay here. I, I was worried, of course, when I read the Facebook post, but I called and emailed you guys and our representatives because we want food trucks around. I understand that it's implement, it's about implementing an ordinance. I don't know about safety because I haven't heard of anything happening to anybody that goes and buys a food truck around here. I see the few that we have, and I've never heard of anybody getting hurt while buying a taco. So I, I, that seems good. However, now, I'm grateful for this opportunity because I would like for you to consider giving us a place to park and finding ways to support us as new entrepreneurs because we are part of Waxaw and the families that we are concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Maury.
Hi. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me while I read off of my thing. I'm very nervous. I'm here to ask the board to vote no on ordinance 2018012 and embrace food trucks in our town. I have some facts and figures for you. Food trucks are a $2.5 billion industry nationwide with a growth rate of about 10% each year, and they're the perfect example of local small business. They hire locally, buy from local sources, and sell locally. In a town where every new chain business is met with a groan, our local food trucks are a breath of fresh, unique air and should be welcomed here. I think they're in line with the town's vision to be a hub for award-winning eating and drinking establishments, which is actually written into the ordinance. Food trucks are a perfect startup small business with low costs and tens of thousands rather than hundreds of thousands for a brick-and-mortar restaurant. The trucks provide entrepreneurs in Waxaw with opportunity to own their own business, hire locally, and train employees who can potentially take their skills into other restaurants and businesses in the community. They buy food and products from our local and regional farmers to use in their kitchens. Many of them become brick-and-mortar establishments in our town. This innovative industry is something beneficial to Waxaw and its citizens. As far as food trucks negatively affecting our local restaurants, this is simply not the case. Just this weekend, several downtown restaurants reported record sales, and these places are in a consistent weight and are beloved in the community. The food trucks do not take away from that. Business breeds business, and people will come into our town for both food trucks and our brick-and-mortar establishments, enjoying variety and spending money in our town. Food trucks encourage people to come out onto the streets and create a sense of community. They pay into our tax system through taxes and fees on their trucks, equipment, gas, sales tax, and food purchases, and stimulate job growth, tourism, and entrepreneurship. We should be encouraging and embracing these small businesses here rather than discouraging their presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alita Galusha.
Hi, I'm Alita Galusha from 8428 White Hawk Hill Road. I've been a resident of Waxaw for six and a half years, and I'm just here to speak for, in favor of providing a way to make these food trucks able to park in a safe manner on some of our municipal streets. As many of you know, the town of Matthews has Food Truck Friday, and I think it's probably every Friday during the spring and summer months. And my, I know my children and grandchildren go to this all the time because it's so wonderful. They enjoy it so much. And, you know, we're trying to encourage foot traffic here in Waxaw. So I think that, you know, our town is smart enough to know that there, there are places where you could safely park a safe, a food truck on a municipal street, but it should be, you know, it should be arranged ahead of time so that the food truck owner knows where exactly to park and how to park. So I'm saying, don't just rule them out completely. Make it possible. Find a way to do it. There's a bunch of smart people here in Waxaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Nick in the back room, could you, it sounds like we have an open mic somewhere. You could address that.
My name is Neil Gimmon. I live at 1201 Bedford Glen Drive, Waxaw, North Carolina. Mayor Commissioners, I am here to voice an objection against the adoption of the NC DOT ordinance. As a side effect of this ordinance, it will prevent food trucks from operating on town roads here in Waxaw. Currently, Waxaw does not have any rules prohibiting food trucks, and last year, the Main Street Advisory Board suggested the following guidelines. A food truck owner must get a license from Waxaw to be able to serve food. A food truck owner must have the permission of the business that they are parked in front of to do business, and a food truck cannot be parked downtown in Waxaw overnight. I've heard some of the discussions about enacting this ordinance is that the food trucks are taking away businesses from other Waxaw restaurants. But in fact, something is being overlooked. Three of the food trucks that Dream Chasers has been, has been serving at the brewery are actually owned by Waxaw residents. So in actuality, we are encouraging Waxaw businesses. Dream Chasers are also very mindful of the types of food that is being served by our food trucks then, so it doesn't compete with any of the other restaurants. How many restaurants here in Waxaw serve Caribbean food, or Indonesian, or Persian, or even Speedies? To our knowledge, none. So in that mind, aren't we addition, adding some additional food choices for the residents of Waxaw? We also show support for the existing restaurants because we have three binderfuls of all of their menus so that people can actually order and get delivery or pickup of their food to the brewery then. With a vote to adopt this DOT ordinance, you are taking away an aspect of what is helping pull people into Waxaw. Is not what the council does want for Waxaw, what the Main Street to be someplace to come to? During the recent election, we heard from a few of you, and you also supported all these small businesses, the backbone of Waxaw economy. With a vote for the DOT ordinance, you've just proven yourselves that you're not a friend to small business. Furthermore, it would seem that this provision is directly aimed at Dream Chasers, as we are the only place right now that is having food trucks. And it begs the question, is this the only motivation? Only those that are pushing for this ordinance have to be, and given that we have been working with the town of Waxaw, our original banking up until now, would you have thought they would talk to us before you started doing this? Thank you.
Thank you. You want to take a minute? We have no additional speakers. We're done with public comments, so I'll just talk a little louder. I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now the fun part of the meeting. We get to do some additional recognition. So would Melody and Kelly come to the front, please?
We have two fantastic administrators here, and we have a couple of propositions that I would ask the board to adopt when I'm done reading. It's Municipal Clerks Week, and with that, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of governments at all levels, whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk, participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most prored that we recognize their accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Stephen E. Maher, along with the Town Board of Commissioners, do recognize the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks, Melody Schuler and Kelly Curry, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they represent. Could I have a motion to adopt this on the 24th day of April 2018?
So moved.
All right, that was almost everybody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
The town of Waxaw was among 23 North Carolina governments to earn recognition in the North Carolina city and county communication, communicators, excellence, and communication awards. The town of Waxaw won two first-place awards. Excellence in Communications, first-place Communication Technology Digital External Newsletter, Town of Waxaw, The Waxaw Happenings e-Newsletter. Congratulations.
Chief Sharp, would you like to come up and hit it?
This is the promotional video, the Waxaw Volunteer Fire Department recruitment video. It won first place TV or video promotional video for the town of Waxaw. And no sound, you can just watch. Congratulations.
we will probably have Sergeant Roger Cohn come in for some additional recognition. So, but we'll go ahead and begin the public hearing phase. So first up, first item up is a public hearing on voluntary annexation, petition 18-222. It's a request by Grove Manor LLC for annexation of 20.27 acres into the town of Waxaw. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver?
Mayor Commissioners, this is an annexation request. The applicant is Grove Manor LLC, represented by Michael W. Bigman, on behalf of the proprietors. The site consists of two parcels and that will approximately 20.27 acres. And on parcel ID number 06165001A and 06165001B.
Could you turn the microphone in and speak again?
And 06165001B, located at 4609 and 4615 Waxaw Marvin Road. The property contains two single-family homes there and there. The property is adjacent to the Prescott subdivision here to the north and to the Grove Manor Phase One site, which is just to the north here. And other single-family homes, vacant parcels to the east and west, located in Waxaw's jurisdiction and Union County's jurisdiction. Property is currently zoned RA20, agricultural and residential in Union County's jurisdiction. If annexed, the town must place zoning on the property. In a separate request, the applicant is requesting to zone the property CD R4 PRD. All-state statute and UDO regulations have been met for this public hearing, and notice was published in the Inquirer Journal on Friday, April 13. The requested action tonight is to close the public hearing, and further, the requested action later is a motion to approve or deny the annexation 18-222. The applicant is here, and I can answer any questions if I're already. Thank you.
This is a series of a couple of presentations on, on this area, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is just in regards to the annexation. Does anybody on the board have questions about the annexation request?
I do.
Commissioner Lee?
What is the benefit to the town of annexing this property?
If the town annexes the property, it would then have control over the property as far as zoning regulations that go, and it would also contribute to the tax base of the town.
But they're going to build residential properties, yes?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Which will cost us more in services than they will provide in taxes, yes?
I do not have the data on that.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
What is the, the rate that we're charging now for what it's costing us? Do you know that, Greg? I heard a dollar thirty cents to, and it's costing us a dollar thirty, or paying a dollar. Is that still true?
There are studies across the country that have been conducted that show that the cost for service versus the taxes paid vary based on the type and density of residential communities. Generally, a dollar fifteen to a dollar thirty is the range that's commonly cited. I don't know of a particular study that's been conducted in Waxaw to look at exactly what that number is. And I'll also say that you would have to make sure that whatever factors are included are carefully understood. So the questions of, are all public services included, like schools, for example? So really, to understand one of those studies, you really do need to dive into the details and really get in, into the facts of how they conducted it. So, but commonly, studies across the country do say that on average, residential properties consume about a dollar fifteen to a dollar thirty in services. However, just depending on the size of the residential structure, that can tend to be controlled for if those structures are more expensive in the tax value. But I think the studies that you're referring to indicate that there are certain types of commercial that are actually on the plus side so that they're actually net contributors to the tax base, and that their services that are required are less than taxes paid.
And we're not looking at, the intention here is they're requesting higher density for smaller lots, for smaller houses. These are not intended to be McMansions that are gonna be built here.
So the real question before us is, annex in, and it would be zoned a certain way. What would be contrasting if it stays in the
What would be contrasting if it stays in the county?
The...
So we're clear?
Yeah. If it stays in the county, then they would have to go before the county commissioners for a resenting request. It's currently zoned RA20, which is a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet in Union County's jurisdiction, but there is a clustering provision to reduce that lot size to, I believe, 15,000 square feet. So it really depends on the site, but you may be looking, you're definitely looking at fewer houses, but it may be 20, 30 houses. It's hard to say. It depends on the particular site.
Can you explain that clustering that you just mentioned, please?
Yes. So the Union County zoning ord...
Here you are.
Sorry. The Union County zoning ordinance has a provision for clustering, which is similar to what our PRD provisions are, as in you concentrate the houses into one particular area of the site, avoiding, you know, environmentally sensitive areas such as steep slopes, wetlands, floodways, that sort of thing. And so you don't get more houses than you would if you evenly divided the site, but you cluster them so you can have smaller lot sizes. And that's the same with the PRD regulations in Waxaw. So for example, the R4 PRD, you're basing the density of the entire development on the 12,000 square foot minimum lot size, but they can reduce the actual lots down to 6,000 square feet.
And is it true that we have a working agreement with Union County to work with us on zoning when it's adjacent or a donut hole?
They...
Have they not said that they'd be willing to work with us?
It's, it's donut hole by donut hole.
Okay.
Yeah, they typically send over, you know, plans for us to review if it is immediately adjacent to our subdivision, and we provide comments, but they're not bound to any...
No, of course not, but there's been communication. There's an open line of communication there?
Yes.
Yeah, there's communication.
Um, RA20 is two houses per acre, right?
Um, yes, yeah, roughly.
CD R4 PRD is...
It's, it's...
If you annexed in, it's four, right?
Yeah, our, our, well...
If you annex, it's doubling.
It's roughly 3.5. There's 43,560 square feet in an acre, so it's 12,000 square foot minimum. It's not quite four.
Thanks, Max.
Any other questions? We have one citizen that has signed up to speak, Mary Sargent. Mary, come for this.
I'm sorry?
Mary Sargent?
Yes, are we talking about Grove Manor?
We are talking about the annexation requested by Grove Manor LLC.
Okay, I'm going to bypass on that one. Please stop here to talk about this meeting.
Okay.
And I will be addressing Grove Manor.
You'll address it in the second public hearing. Very good. All right. With that, given we have no additional questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Could we go see if Roger's ready before we start the next public hearing? Because the next public hearing is going to take a while. Let's take a brief two-minute recess while we're trying to bring Sergeant Cohn in here. And no, we weren't there to enjoy Chief Ice's finger foods, not at, not at all. We were there to recognize Sergeant Roger Cohn, who's retiring after 50 years of public service in Union County. We, I won't go through and read the proclamation because we have more to say, but I would welcome a motion from the board to adopt this proclamation honoring Sergeant Roger Cohn on April 24th, 2018.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Now, he's retiring after almost 50 years of public safety service in Union County, 13 of which have been with the Town of Waxaw. And we don't see these too often. But from the state of North Carolina, Governor Roy Cooper is providing the Order of the Long Leaf Pine to one Mr. Roger Cohn, recognizing his 50 years of service to the state of North Carolina. Fabulous recognition from the state. Congratulations. I know how you love to talk. Do you want to say anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. And like you've heard, I was here for 13 years, and I'd love to say I enjoyed every minute of it. I consider Waxaw my home. Born and raised in Monroe, but over the past 13 years, Waxaw has become my home. All the guys in the police department, I just got through talking with them. It's like I say, they're a family, and I've told each and every one of them, and I'll tell you people too, if you ever need me for anything, call me. I'll be there. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item up, public hearing on Grove Manor Phase Two, Conditional District Rezoning Petition CD 006694-2017. And Phase One Major Conditional District Amendment Petition CD 00677-2018. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Max, welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, this is a Conditional District Rezoning Request from Union County RA20 Single Family Residential Agricultural to CD R4 PRD. Conditional District Single Family Planned Residential Development. The proposed development is a 56-lot, single-family home subdivision. Concurrently, the applicant is requesting a major conditional district amendment to eliminate a perimeter buffer between the phases, Phase One, which was previously approved in 2016, and this Phase Two that's currently being reviewed, and to utilize open space within the Phase Two area. Staff report and presentation of both cases were combined because the Phase One amendment is more easily understood in the context, because the phase, more easily understood because the Phase Two Conditional District Rezoning, I'm sorry, what was?
Hey, Max, why don't you just take the microphone out and just hold it. Apparently it's not picking up.
I can, I can do that. Okay. The Phase One amendment is more easily understood in the context of the Phase Two Conditional Rezoning. All requirements for this public hearing have been met. The properties are located on Waxaw Marvin Road. The Phase One properties are zoned CD R4 PRD, and the Phase Two properties are zoned Union County RA20. The four parcels contain approximately two single-family, the properties contain approximately two single-family homes and several agricultural structures. The properties are primarily wooded and the fields primarily along the road frontage. To the north is the Prescott subdivision. To the south, east, and west are scattered single-family residences, and the Phase Five Mill Bridge is over here to the west. The Future Land Use Map from the Conference of Plan shows the future land use designation for the property as residential and the G3 Intended Growth Sector. The Phase Two properties are zoned Union County RA20. Union County RA20 has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and allows for construction of single-family homes. The RA20 district allows for clustering and reduce lot sizes to 15,000 square feet. Under Union County regulations, the properties can be developed with approximately 20 to 30 houses, depending on the site conditions. The Phase One properties are zoned CD R4 PRD. The proposed zoning is CD R4 PRD. The site is adjacent both to CD R4 PRD in the Grove Manor Phase One site and to CUR3 PRD in the, in the Prescott development. The Phase One zoning is not proposed to change with the major amendment request. This is the overall site plan for the Phase Two here, and Phase One is shown here, but we'll focus on Phase Two. A single-family residential subdivision is proposed Grove Manor Phase Two site, 56 lots and an average density of 2.87 dwelling units per acre, with typical lot being 50 feet wide and 120 feet deep and a minimum of 6,000 square feet. A neighborhood meeting was held prior to the planning board hearing, and the minutes and attendance lists from the neighborhood meeting are in your packets. The applicant is requesting a reduction to the rear lot setbacks on the exterior from 40 feet to 30 feet, and a reduction on the interior lot setbacks from 30 feet to 25 feet in accordance with the regulations of the UDO. The board may approve these reductions and setback. The project is proposed to be developed in one phase and completed by summer of 2022. The proposed planned residential development allows for clustering of homes in order to provide open space and protect environmentally sensitive areas, allowing for the reduction in the R4 zoning district from 12,000 square feet lot sizes to 6,000 square feet. Overall, the density of the development may not increase from that which was allowed based on the 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. Access to the site is proposed via an unsignaled intersection on Waxaw Marvin Road here and also into the Phase One site on Ideal Rock Way. Improvements along Waxaw Marvin Road are subject to NCDOT requirements. A five-foot public sidewalk is proposed along the length of the Waxaw Marvin Road corridor side in front of the site. A center-left turn lane will be provided on Waxaw Marvin Road site, and that's noted in the Conditional Rezoning Plans. And a traffic impact analysis was not required for the proposed development. So this is the landscaping plan. All the houses will be on this side of a dry creek that runs through the center of the property, and this area is proposed for open space. A 30-foot perimeter buffer is required along all exterior boundaries of the site totaling 1.74 acres and 20% or 2.97 acres internal tree save area slash open space is required, and the applicant is proposing an internal tree save area of 4.5 acres, 4 tenths of, 4 tenths of an acre of which is proposed to be allocated to the Grove Manor Phase One site through the Phase One major amendment. A 20-foot street landscaping buffer, buffer along Waxaw Marvin Road will be provided, and each single-family lot is required to have a minimum of three yard trees. There are no regulatory floodplains on the site. These are some renderings, the proposed houses. The applicant has proposed a condition that the architecture will comply with the standards of Section 20 of the UDO. That's architectural standards. Now, we'll go over the details of the Phase One major amendment. So this is the approved site plan from the Phase One site that was approved for Conditional District Rezoning in 2016. The proposed Grove Manor Phase One Conditional District Amendment is not a rezoning request, but is a request to amend a previously approved plan. If the amendment request is not approved, the property can still be developed according to this previously approved plan. The applicant is requesting to remove a 30-foot perimeter buffer along the southern boundary, which is this line here, and this, this would be the Phase Two site in here. The applicant is also requesting to utilize a portion of the common open space from the Phase Two area and supplement the 20% minimum requirement in the Phase One area. The amendment request is essentially to combine the Phase One site and the Phase Two site, if approved, into one development, thus eliminating the requirement for this 30-foot buffer, because that would then be internal to the combined Phase One, Phase Two Grove Manors. This is just a recap of the rezoning from RA20 to CD R4. Staff recommends approval of the proposed Conditional District Rezoning CD 006694-2017 and Grove Manor Phase One Major Conditional District Amendment CD 006777-2018. At their March 19th regular meeting, the planning board voted to send a favorable recommendation to the board commissioners on both Conditional District Rezoning CD 006694-2017 and the major amendment CD 006777-2018. The, the requested action tonight is to close the public hearing, but the requested motions for the future are in the, are up on the screen. The applicant is here and would like to give a brief presentation about the development, and I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Maybe I need to hold this to... Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present this petition. My name is Wayne Harris of Methilina Engineering and Servin Associates, and we're representing the applicant, who is going to make a presentation shortly regarding some of the product specifics. The area that we're now referring to as Phase One was approved last year as just Grove Manor. And at that time, there, a second phase was not anticipated, the adjoining property was not for sale, didn't want to sell. Late last year, after we had prepared the construction documents for the Phase One parcel, that adjoining property became available, the Grove Manor LLC put the property under contract, and then subsequently started the rezoning process last fall. Phase Two is essentially a continuation of Phase One in terms of product type, architecture, style, and target market. The targeted market is active adult, empty nesters that are looking to typically downsize, and the applicant's going to talk more about that in just a second. Phase One was approximately 15 and, 15 and a half acres, was approved for a maximum of 48 units with a density of slightly over three units per acre. Phase Two is proposing a maximum of 56 lots on slightly over 20 acres with a density of less than three units per acre. It's about 2.78, I think, to be exact. The addition of the Phase Two property provides for an additional access point and also provides an opportunity so that economically it becomes more feasible to add a central amenity which would serve both phases of the site. Just to talk briefly about the, the Phase Two, the Phase One amendment, this is, this is the common property line between the Phase Two area and the previously approved Phase One area. This area shaded in pink was a... One area. This area shaded in pink was a perimeter buffer, required perimeter buffer fake for Phase One. If the rezoning is, is successful and this becomes one project, then we'd no longer have a need for the interior buffer. Uh, and with respect to the reallocation of some common area in Phase Two, excuse me, as we went through the design process.
Could we move that over this side so it can be on camera? Thank you. We're good, we're good, we're good.
As, as we went through the construction document phase of Phase One, we realized that in order to satisfy water quality requirements, we wound up needing more BMP areas than we'd originally anticipated. The common open space in Phase One actually increased but the amount of internal tree preservation area decreased because of having to convert some of those areas to water quality features. So we have an excess of both open space and, and uh, tree preservation areas. So we're reallocating some of that portion and this area, we're actually showing what would be the, the enlarged BMP which would be a central BMP. Then that would serve both phases. I just did, take just a second and go back uh, and touch on a couple of things that uh, Max mentioned previously. He is correct that clustering is allowed under Union County's ordinance but the minimum parcel size to do a clustered subdivision is 25 acres. This site's uh, 20.2 acres so we don't meet the threshold to do a clustered subdivision. And we would be required to have 100-foot wide minimum lots but there is a provision to produce that minimum lot size down to 15,000 square feet and we can do what I think the Union County ordinance refers to as a two-unit home. So we have 56 50-foot lots which is essentially 28 100-foot lots. So if we did those as 100-foot lots, you can actually do a duplex product. So it's not, and so it would still be in the mid twenties, mid to high twenties in terms of the unit count, in terms of the building count. But the unit count would be double under that, that provision. Uh, and one other point in, in terms of cost, when you're looking at this targeted market, um, they, they don't have children, they don't do a lot of the things that, that are consumers of, of public dollars. So I think that what you would see is, and Michael might have some numbers on that, but I think what you would see is that the, is that the public cost isn't as great in a, in an elderly, or not elderly, but in, in a age-restricted, age-targeted type, type community.
So Max, could you just bring that over so we're not blocking the audience?
Thank you Wayne. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. My name is Michael Ignema and I promise Max uh, you'll get my last name right. I promise. Soon here buddy. I'm just joking. I am the applicant as well as the president of Broad Street Homes and a local home building and development firm based here in Matthews, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak and to present to you Phase Two of Grove Manor. Being a local and small business, it is important to me to make sure that we are answering any and all questions that you have and addressing any concerns that the general public has or will be expressing. We are truly here to be great neighbors to the surrounding communities and to do our part to deliver a community that all of us will be proud when it's complete. I'd like to thank Max Oliver for his opening overview and for all his hard work throughout the process. In effort to keep this presentation on point, I will do my best not to repeat what Max and/or Wayne has already started. Throughout this presentation, you will hear words to describe a specific demographic including the words active adults, empty nester, senior housing, et cetera. Regardless of the term used, we are catering to the baby boomer generation and not of the traditional family home buyer. To reiterate this point, I first want to share some of our community highlights and our home designs. I believe it's important for everyone to understand that Grove Manor is not just another community selling traditional style homes. We are here to serve a very much underserved aging population. We are here and we will be offering single-story, one-and-a-half-story homes that appeal to today's empty nester home buyer. No two-story homes will be offered in Grove Manor. Professionally designed and exterior elevations with stone accents, cover patios, rocking chair front porches. Lawn maintenance is managed and paid for through the HOA resulting in a better maintain and appealing community. This is a great feature for the community residents and also feel this is a great feature for the town of Waxall is they never have to worry about the community appearance because it will always be well-maintained. All of our homes have great open floor plans and features to accommodate the needs and desires of the active adult lifestyle. Everything you need is on one level. I brought a sample of our elevations. Uh, I know Wayne touched on it before and probably some of the packets you've received for Phase One and the community meeting. We brought four of our elevations here, four out of the, the 20 elevations that will be inside Grove Manor. As you can see, very architecturally pleasing roof lines, many details. Just the exact product that this demographic is looking for. Next behind here, I wanted to share two of our floor plans here. This is our Madison and our, I believe our Ashton Plan. Our, our floor plans range anywhere from 1,500 to 2,800 square feet. Two bedrooms, two bathrooms, that optional third bedroom with that optional flex room in case you're looking for a little bit more storage or that hobby room. Showing the openness of the plan, you see the large islands, the entertaining great rooms, the spacious owner suites, leading off to optional screen porches, sunrooms, and many other options available for this demographic. You can see everything on one level. As we all know, the town of Waxall is seeing tremendous growth over the last 10 years with a concentration on traditional housing. As we heard this evening, folks are relocating from Waxall to other areas because there is virtually no supply of such housing within its town limits. The feedback and interest we have received on Phase One of Grove Manor has been incredible. Already we have over 35 potential home buyers on our VIP list simply from just one little ad that we placed on the Waxall magazine. And the number one feedback we were getting is there is nothing like this in Waxall or even close by especially at a comfortable price point. This confirms our findings for this lifestyle demographic that senior housing is much needed in this area. And I, and in a couple of slides, I'm going to review the inventory slide of the area to help confirm that for you. A vast majority of the empty nesters, they like to shop locally, support the local businesses and causes, be close to their children and grandchildren as in return, they want their parents to be close by as well. They like to volunteer their time and take great pride in their home and in the community. Empty nester communities have less impact on the schools, virtually none. This results in less trips commuting to and from schools, before and after school activities, all which drastically reduces the amount of vehicles on the road. And as well, I want to spend more time on that later on and talk more about the traffic as I know that is a, a concern for people. And the next slide here, as I want to, as I mentioned, I want to go back to the previous slide here, is I wanted to review our current inventory status for this demographic, for the baby boomer generation. I had our sales team update the 28173 area which is a majority of Union County. As you can see, we pulled it from the Carolina MLS source. We pulled up for all new construction 2017 and 2018, the search types of one-story, one-and-a-half-story, one-story with finished room over to garage and a patio home. As I can say, everything can be a different term. This is straight off the Carolina MLS. And I said, I want to see where the numbers are at. Please run everything with those property searches under 300,000 and under 350,000. As you can see, under 300,000, there was one home under construction. And I'll back it up, it's not even under construction, it's proposed. So under 300,000, there is zero homes under construction in all of 28173. So I said, okay, let's look at 350,000. And I'm, I'm still baffled by the numbers that we're looking at here. We're still talking about 300 and 350,000 dollars for homes that are less than 2,200 square feet, 1,500 square feet. And their findings, there is four homes. And out of those four homes, there is two proposed homes. So out of all of 28173 and new construction, there is two homes under contract in the entire area of 28173. So to me, the results were very clear that there is no new construction inventory for the baby boomer generation. And after looking in further, there's an affordability issue here that Waxall is starting to create as well. Back to our proposed community enhancements. When the residents arrive in Grove Manor, they'll be greeted by professionally designed stone monuments at both entrances. Will be installed heavily, heavy landscaping park benches as well as a five-foot sidewalk along the Waxall Marvin Road as Wayne mentioned and also throughout the community. Will be installing a walking trail that connects the Carolina Thread Trail which is also the number one amenity for this demographic. With addition to Phase Two, we will be offering an amenity for all residents of the community. We feel this is a very, we would have very much liked to have added this such amenity to Phase One but with only being 46 lots, the HOA dues could not be justified for those homeowners. Now the entire community can enjoy the following of the residence clubhouse, of a full-service kitchen to host the community functions, craft and multipurpose rooms, hobby rooms, an exercise room, outdoor gathering area, and a grand club room. We'll also be installing a pickleball court. Uh, for those of you not familiar with a pickleball court, it's very similar to tennis just on a much smaller scale that you will see in similar neighborhoods to like Grove Manor throughout the country. It's a lot of fun, great exercise for this demographic but this is what they are requesting. With the above amenities and what you were mentioning, we are catering to this lifestyle that this demographic is seeking, seeking a place to relax and hang out and enjoy our neighbors. This next slide i- is very important and I know Max touched on it and Wayne has touched on it as well. I just want to help clarify, we were, where we are at today with Phase Two versus what we are proposing for Phase Two. Currently, we are in Union County and we are zoned RA20. The current RA20 as defined by the Union County UDO is intended to accommodate single-family residential developments including classes of manufactured housing. That's a word none of us want to hear, especially in Union County. By right, we have, we can and without any rezoning can do at least 56 homes today because of the duplex. Yes, we have 56 homes which surprisingly, what's kind of funny that, that's the exact amount of homes we are proposing today for our active, active adult community is 56 homes. With this type of community, we would have a much greater impact to the schools compared to the Grove Manor community we are proposing as well as a much greater impact on traffic compared to what we are proposing. With the current zoning of Union County, there are no architectural requirements as compared to what would must be followed by the Waxall UDO. And in the next slide, I will go into more detail about the traffic analysis we had conducted on our own, own dime because even though it wasn't required, we wanted to get clarification for the concerns and the questions that's going to uh, bring about. Why do I bring this up? I bring this up because all along we viewed Phase Two simply as an extension to Phase One and we would prefer to have a community where all of our homes within the town of Waxall versus a split community where half is in Waxall and half is in Union County. As a local home builder, we share the same vision about Waxall and that is to maintain our small feel and quaintness. In our opinion, the current Union County zoning does nothing for the town of Waxall. And we hope that what we are proposing as a viewed, is viewed in a much better light. As a result, we are asking to be annexed in the Waxall, have our plans approved, and Grove Manor help provide the solution to housing shortage serving today's baby boomer generation. As I mentioned uh, previously in the community hu- uh, highlight slide, I wanted to spend more time on the traffic analysis. I completely understand the concerns of, of the traffic impact that any community, that any school that, that is going to have. My business partner lives in Waxall. I live right at the line in Charlotte. I, I, I get the traffic, I understand. So we wanted to help clarify this answer. Even though our trip count did not trigger the TIAA for Grove Manor, we went ahead and we hired our own traffic engineer to help provide clarity on the traffic concerns. We hired WSP Traffic Engineers. We believe is the largest traffic engineering firm in the world. We had them do a comparison of the two style communities for Phase Two of Grove Manor. Traditional style family in the red and the senior housing of Grove Manor in the blue. All of their data, the Institute of Transportation Engineers is the industry standard source for providing trip generation information for the various land uses. So we wanted to get this out here to show, to clarify what our style of community is going to do. And as you can see, within a 24-hour trip, a traditional style community is going to have 533 compared to 205, 206, excuse me. The AM peak times 43 to 12 and the PM peak times from 56 to 15. As you can see, these, these results are staggering. The, the senior housing provides approximately 70% fewer trips than a single-family traditional homes. And I put the complete packet in there, the certified complete packet from WSP that should be more than glad to uh, have some more information in there for you. The, the question came up, you know, about some schools and, and I, and I completely understand. I have three children in Audrey Kell, the largest school district in North Carolina. I understand the school impacts. But to us, this is, I feel this is a very moot point with our empty, empty nester communities. But I understand and respect the question on the school impacts. Even though we feel like we have virtually no impact on the schools, I wanted to share this data that we received directly from Union County which is done by the McKibben Report. And as you can see, the next few slides show the Waxall Elementary School and the Parkwood and Middle, Middle School because we wanted to show the facts that even though we feel we will have virtually no students going to these schools, but I still wanted to show the facts here that these schools are still well under the cap and watch list for the Parkwood and the Waxall Elementary School District. We've been working with planning and staff on this project for a little over two years now. Um, we've had, received great feedback. We presented Phase Two, as Max said, to the planning board last month. Uh, we received a unanimous decision and we are hoping what you heard tonight uh, brings great comfort and we hope that we have your support as well. And I thank you for your time and I'll be more than glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, so questions from the board first before we go to uh, public hearing. So we'll start, Commissioner Burl, you want to go first?
Yes.
And speak into the microphone, please.
As, as an elderly individual.
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain to me the difference between age targeted and age restricted?
I can. I can. And I, and I'm going to go into a, a few reasons because this is, this question has come up on Phase One, on Phase One. So I would like to, if, to run through my bullet points here to talk about age restriction and age targeted. Okay? From a homeowner's perspective, no one wants to feel that they are getting older. I don't know if you do, but I'm sorry for.
Have to do.
I want to make sure. So nobody wants to feel. They, they don't want to be stereotyped living in an age restricted community. Many of the grandparents, the limitations imposed on visiting children in an age restricted community is a concern for many. Age restricted communities typically welcome visiting children but they do have rules on how long they can stay. Homeowners may also have to worry, God forbid, an, an age restricted community would prevent them from taking their grandchildren permanently in the event of an emergency. All of us would hate to see that happen. As you saw in our presentation, our product to me and I feel to the general public, and I want to bring one of our Waxall ads up here, is a product and lifestyle marketed 100% to that active adult buyer. Our product is restrictive enough with two bedrooms, two bathrooms. And I'd like to go back to our, our Waxall ad here. I, I can tell, I have three children. And this is our Waxall, you probably saw right on the, right next to Millbridge. As you can see, we are completely different than Millbridge. I have three children. When I look at our marketing and I look at that, that elevation home and I look at the three pictures there of the demographics and it says, enjoy your new single-family home in Waxall's active adult community. I know as a family, that is not a family-style community, just looking at our marketing. That is a restricted neighborhood that is age-targeted to that. We're not talking about. We're not talking about swimming pools, we're not talking about anything else, there's not one kid in that picture there. This is an active adult lifestyle. The reason being, we are installing a pickleball court and a craft and a hobby room in our clubhouse. If we wanted to go after, and I, and I understand the question we are coming from, Fred, and I'm not trying to skirt around it, is if we wanted to go after that generation, uh, not the, um, restricted generation, we would be installing a, a swimming pool. But that's not what this demographic is looking for. This is not what the Metro studies and all the surveys we've been following. This is what this demographic wants. I also wanna be fair, and I wanna look out for our current landowners, Yori, who is here tonight that would like to speak. Uh, for some reason, our due diligence doesn't check out, and we are unable to close on the property, I believe it would be completely unfair to him, that now that he has a property that is annexed in, paying higher property taxes and it's age-restricted. So I, I believe it would be such a disservice to them, and it would be a lot harder to
I understand that, that's not gonna be part of our decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? What I'm trying to get at is, to me, there is a significant difference between age targeting and age-restricted. And when you are age-targeted, and if you're going to be somewhere probably in the two-fifty to three-fifty range, that is right now the most sought-after price range in this area.
Mm-hmm.
It just doesn't exist, whether it's for seniors or for first-time buyers. And I cannot see how we can sit here and guarantee that we're not gonna have an impact on the school system when you're offering the type of housing, the price of housing that is the most sought-after price going. It just doesn't exist.
I, I understand your point, and I also, I don't wanna get off topic here of, Phase One is approved.
Yep.
Phase One is approved, that is a not restricted, is an age-targeted community. Why is this any different, Phase Two?
Because you've gone.
Because this is an extension.
Double the number.
Because the growth with, with, our feedback is incredible, that there is nothing in this area, a family buyer is gonna be.
I won't disagree with you on any of that.
Okay, I'm trying to understand your question.
My question is, how do we make sure?
Sure.
That this project
Mm-hmm.
Does not go to the non-elderly, non-baby boomer purchaser who comes in, just married, maybe has one ki- one child, two children, and then puts the pressure on the schools.
Sure.
That you're promising to avoid.
Right.
How do you deal with that?
Absolutely, and I love the big Brian up who's spent a lot of time with the schools and, and the traffic.
Uh, good evening, Brian Agnema, partner with Michael. There is something called the HOPA Act, and the, and the HOPA Act, as you may aware, beware, is a federal statute, stands for the Housing for Older Persons Act. When you hear about fifty-five and older, age-restricted, that's what most communities, if not all, age-restricted, age-restricted communities follow. However, that doesn't mean that one hundred percent of the homes are age-restricted.
Correct.
So eighty percent of those homes have to have one resident that's at least fifty-five years or older. So even if it were an age-restricted community, there's still an opportunity for folks that are half-school-aged children that could live in the neighborhood.
Yes.
So I don't, to answer your question very directly, I don't know if you can ever guarantee that there's gonna be a child or children that can live in that neighborhood.
But you are correct there, but you're restricted to twenty percent.
That is correct.
Not possibly a hundred percent.
That's correct. But if we're stating Union County, there is no restriction at all. They can build fifty-six homes in Union County today with zero restrictions whatsoever. And, and we think, I mean, we can, we can belabor the point here about the product and the amenity and so forth, but these are two-bedroom, two-bath homes that are not gonna appeal to a family traditional buyer. They're not. Are we rolling, are you rolling the dice a little bit? Yes, you are. There are some folks that may consider it, but it's gonna be in such the minority. We have numerous neighborhoods that are active adult, and I can tell you that the traditional buyer is not gonna be seeking this neighborhood. If they wanna go out and buy home and be in Waxall and be less than three hundred thousand dollars, go to Millbridge. Their sign out front right now says from the two-eighties. Buy a resale home. There's homes in Prescott, we can pull up a slide now, there's homes in Prescott that are in the mid-two hundreds. So that opportunity does exist. So if you're a family home buyer looking for two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, it does exist in Waxall. What doesn't exist is this product.
That I understand too. What I'm looking for is how do you guarantee that this stays with senior baby boomers, et cetera? That's what I'm after.
It's a conditional rezoning, so the, the product lends a lot of restrictions already. But if you're asking that, would we do a one hundred percent age-restricted community, the answer is no. That's the only way that we'd even, that you could even get comfort with that answer, that no children are permitted. Our lenders are not gonna permit that, we, we just, we're not gonna do that. We, we'll just stay in Union County and build fifty-six duplexes instead. And that's not a takeaway, we wanna be part of Waxall. We absolutely wanna be part of Waxall. Phase One, this was not an issue, and maybe it's an issue now because there's more homes being built. But there's gonna be the same number of homes being built regardless. So fifty-six duplexes in Union County with no age restrictions whatsoever, or fifty-six active adult patio homes being built in Waxall, I would think would be more favorable to the town. You're still gonna service it, you're still in the area, to your question, I respect your question, but your neighbors. So when Union County needs help, Waxall's gonna help. Police, fire, whatever it may be, they're gonna help. So wouldn't it make more sense to have control over the architecturals, the product, and be just in the connection of already what's been?
Okay, you don't, we're just, we're into.
No, I don't mean to be argumentative at all.
We're into, um, trying to debate a point.
Okay.
And.
It wasn't my intent, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, that's fine. Commissioner Wesleyk, do you have questions?
My, my question, I, I had the same concerns about the schools. Um, I don't know if you're familiar, but we've had a recent, um, realignment of our schools, and, and a portion of Millbridge was just removed from the, the school that was in, that's in their neighborhood.
Correct.
And whereas, now, did anybody clarify with the school system that this would be Parkwood?
Yes.
Okay, that's for sure.
Yes.
Okay, because that was, that was my concern, that as they're, we're taking out, you know, a section of Millbridge to then add in a new neighborhood, so.
Yeah, but we, let, let's, let's be clear and be careful. This is a twenty-twenty, when did you say you'd be done?
Two?
Twenty-twenty-two. We don't control, nor do we provide influence to the Board of Education as to what they would do between now and then, so all you can give us is, as of today, this is what it would be. So we gotta be careful there.
No, I just wanted to make sure that, that those, that the boundary was checked, 'cause I thought that Pine Oak was the, the, the boundary, so that was, okay, thank you.
Prescott and Grove Manor, that line divides the two.
Okay.
Do you have other questions?
No, that's all right.
Okay, Commissioner Lee.
Okay. Uh, one, these homes look beautiful. They look great. Uh, these homes are the same approximate size for less money than my starter home was in Pineville. Had I been able to have this as an option, guarantee you would've bought this home to get me into Union County, to get me into Waxall as a starter home. This would appeal to me immensely, especially considering what I, what I did buy and waited in Pineville for years just to get in here. Um, so you're right, there's no way you can guarantee that this will have a minimal or nonexistent impact on the schools. There's no way you can guarantee these traffic study numbers, 'cause they're based on your assumption that it's going to be people who aren't driving very much. But your own floor plan image shows two cars per garage.
Correct.
So, two cars per household, and some of the most active people I know, the people who drive around this town the most are over sixty. So the idea that they're not contributing to.
Sure.
Traffic.
Understand.
I'm gonna tell you, I don't believe that, I'm sorry. Um, secondly, you're telling me you're, you're telling us, you're gonna build fifty-six homes one way or the other.
Yes.
So you'd like to be a part of Waxall as opposed to a part, part of Union County.
Correct.
Just wanted to get that number straight in my head. I'm done.
Can I respond? It's, it's not, our assumptions, that's a traffic engineer that was hired, that follows the I T E manual, that every traffic engineer, that's not our assumptions on car counts and things of that nature. There, there's, there's statistics that every traffic engineer has to follow.
Based on the age bracket you're targeting for them?
It's based on housing type. So they have two different, there's numerous classifications of housing types in the I T E. There's traditional housing, and there's senior housing. Senior housing encompasses age-restricted, as well as active adult, as well as age-targeted, all falls underneath the same bucket. So they compare those numbers. So that was directly from W S P that was hired, uh, to provide a traffic analysis for, for this discussion.
Thank you.
There are actually three numbers on there. The top number was total trip generation.
Please speak into the microphone.
On that graphic, the, the top number was total trip generation, and total trip generation for this demographic is reduced. Those bottom two numbers, and those, those separations are also dramatic, those were peak hour, A M and P M trips. So you're right, they're in the car going somewhere, but it's, it's, it's not at seven-thirty A M, it's more likely probably at nine-thirty A M, 'cause they don't wanna be sitting in that traffic.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
I'm, I'm looking at your, um, can you bring up your housing, the floor plan? So, just take the one on the right.
Mm-hmm.
You've got one bedroom, you've got a master suite, and then you've got bedroom two.
Correct.
So in the middle, you have your polyametic flex room.
Correct.
And it's thirteen by eleven. That could be a third bedroom. If anyone wanted to put a closet in there and make, make a door, uh, to make that a jack and jill, then you've got a house with three bedrooms, really, if, if they wanted to make those, those minor changes. And, um, so as far as marketing, and as Commissioner, uh, Lee said, I know I have two sons in, in that age group, one has one child. Um, they would buy this house and not care whether there were older people my age in that neighborhood with one child at a lower rate, and that would impact the schools and the traffic, um, and make that a third bedroom. So there's nothing that you can say or guarantee that a couple with children would not do that.
They, they certainly could. They absolutely could.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'm done.
Mayor Protan?
And what is the reason that you said that you would not make this an age-restricted community to ensure that the population would be the fifty-five or older community that you're advertising for as opposed to those baby boomers who are looking for something less expensive in, um, the area?
Sure. Capital constraints. So the lender, the, the lender that, that funded Phase One will not fund an age-restricted community. It's the same disservice that we, we would be putting a landowner in if we decided not to close on their property. God forbid something happened to us, and they had to foreclose on their property, they're not gonna be real excited trying to re-market an age-restricted neighborhood, because you've really pigeonholed that particular piece of property. Our, our lender constraints are not gonna do it. They've al- we've already had this conversation with our lender, and the lender said, "If you have an opportunity..." They questioned us on why we even wanted to get an annexed into the town of Waxall and go through the rezoning process, when we can go right now into Union County and build the same number of homes. But it, we believe the right thing to do is to continue with what we've already started and add Phase Two to what's already been approved on Phase One.
So if you go right now into Union County, as you said, to, um, build the same amount of homes, you stated that you would be, uh, able to build duplex-type homes.
Correct.
So in that situation, would you still then be age-targeting people for those homes? Would it be age-targeted, or you would just open it up to anyone to buy those particular homes?
I'd prefer it's the same product attached. I mean, if we're gonna, we, the intent was to have one neighborhood. We, we have a hundred and six total homes. So the intent would still be to offer this demographic, to offer this product on that one particular lot.
But the possibility is, is that you would, you could possibly pursue another option if you, um, went through the Union County process.
Great, great question, but we're an active adult builder. That, that's all we build. So we'd, we'd have to develop a whole new product line, it just, there's not much interest for us to go out and build something for us and compete with the Millbridges, the Curriton resales, the Prescotts, et cetera. The data here is what, is what's blowing us away. They're selfishly, we have so much interest, why would we not just continue with the same exact thing? So the product would be a little bit different, 'cause it has to be attached, but the demographic we would be seeking would be, would be the same.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's get to the public, uh, part of this. Thank you.
Before we start, I'd like to know how I get a presentation like that in front of you guys? Because you have a presentation that I sent to you guys, but I wasn't allowed to share it with the public, and I really would like that. So that would be, I'm sorry, that would be one of my concerns, is that you just gave a, I don't know how long that was, presentation, and I would like, I don't know if any of you have my.
Well, if you want, if you wanna do a similar presentation, just make a request to the clerk, and we will bring you back.
Okay.
The, the intent of public comments is, is to limit it to, to keep it at three minutes and, and to voice your primary concern.
Okay, I'll start with my primary concerns, but I wanna make sure that you all have my presentation in front of you, okay? So, uh, as a resident of Waxall, I would like the board to understand that why I and many of the residents of Prescott moved to Waxall. I was, um, I, it was because I wanted to be in a rural setting. Within the last five years, Waxall has approved a tremendous amount of construction, which is jeopardizing any hope of maintaining a rural setting. I picked Prescott because I spent twenty-two years in construction, I know firsthand what construction sites are like and how they're run. I wanted a quiet community in a mature neighborhood in a setting with walking trails, so that I could be close to nature. I don't want to view the transformed into, my view to be transformed into being close to more residential homes. The construction of homes in Grove Manor and Lindsey Man, and Meadows will affect our peace of mind, the landscape of our neighborhood, and the beauty of our walking trails. Cutting down the existing natural habitat and replacing them with more brick and mortar isn't a peaceful, isn't the peacefulness we sought. The board, the board's approval of Lindsey Meadows would directly affect, and Grove Manor, I'm sorry, would directly affect this, the, our pres- preservation and our lifestyles that we hold so dear. I would also like to point out that there are six home construction sites within three-point four miles of our neighborhood. The original Millbridge, which has over one thousand four hundred and ninety homes, the new phase of Millbridge, Kenzieston Park, Oak Grove, Lawson, and Oak Grove Estates. This doesn't include existing neighborhoods like Curriton. Sorry, guys, I had Lindsey Meadows in here as well. In regards to building retirement, uh, building the retirement home community of, um, Meadows, of Grove Manor, uh, it isn't the neighbors I oppose to, it's, um, the amount of construction that's going on within Waxall. I'm not against the neighbors or the populace of people, I'm against the fact that on both sides of my neighborhood, we will be enduring five years of new construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. My name is Frank Emanuel, and my wife and I currently be lighting an apartment at sixteen-hundred Attic Club Lane in Fort Mill, South Carolina. The reason we live in Fort, Fort Mill is because when I came here seven months ago, I was not able to find suitable housing. My wife has lost her eyesight six years ago, so our living ranges are restricted. So to find a, a one-story family home or an apartment on the first floor that's, that accommodates us, that's within our price range, was pretty restrictive. So we wound up in Fort Mill. However, my son and his family live in Waxall. They've been residents here for five years. And the reason we moved here is to be, to be near them, for, for a number of reasons. I wouldn't say, I won't say I moved to Waxall for the weather, 'cause today's not a good day to say that. But, but we're here because my daughter-in-law is a licensed real estate agent, she's also a licensed registered nurse, so I get plenty of advice on both sides. But working with her, we not, I, that's how I found out about this thing, we're not able to find any, any good housing since we've been here, so that's what we're doing. Now, we moved here from The Villages in Florida. For those of you that are not aware of The Villages, it's the largest single-family home, ranch-style home, for senior citizens in the country. We talked about this in this restrict, this, uh, photograph, there was a show, show of a pickleball court. When I moved to The Villages in nineteen ninety-seven, bowling was the number-one sport. That soon became taken. That soon became taken over by golf, which is now taken over by pickleball. The number-one sport in The Villages, resident community, seniors, over one hundred and twenty thousand people, pickleball's number-one sport. So, I think that Grove Manor is an excellent idea for this community. I'm not that well aware of the community, I'm not that familiar with it, but senior citizen housing is a need in today's economy. To get a reasonable home at a reasonable price that seniors and women mostly, like on fixed incomes, can afford, I think is a necessity. And when you approve this project, I'll be one of the first to buy a home there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Margaret Emanuel?
I was very happy to hear my husband say that we would be the first residents to be into Grove Manor. And because we came from a fifty-five, fifty-five and over community, and it is the best living that I've ever had. Residents all become more like family and friends, and the outside community absolutely loved us because we were in access to that community, to, to all of the businesses and restaurants and everything else, though. Like I said, why would you not want a community there that's an asset to, to the outside community, to your businesses, your schools, just everything? Why would you not want that? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Bob Georges?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Bob Georges, and I live at nine oh six Stackhorn Lane in Waxaw. And my wife and I, Diane, have lived there the last twenty years in Hunter Oaks. You're probably all familiar with Hunter Oaks. We love the town of Waxaw. Like a previous presenter, she mentioned she didn't want to see Waxaw grow. She doesn't like to see the growth. Well, I don't like to see the growth either, but it's, it's a fact. It's going to happen. And I think, overall, Waxaw's done a pretty good job with the growth. We moved down here about thirty years ago from Columbus, Ohio. I'm a vet and a retiree, and although I'm a retiree, I think I'm, you know, with today's, today, you, you're not your actual age, you're what you think you are. And my wife reminds me daily that she thinks I'm nineteen, or I think I'm nineteen, again. So, but anyway, we built a house in Hunter Oaks twenty years ago, and it was a one-story, it was a three-bedroom, and, I'm sorry, it was a four-bedroom. We made it a two-master bedroom with an office. And the builder, at the time, Crosland, said we were making a mistake. We'd never sell the house. Well, everyone that's been to our house says, "You ever get ready to sell it, we want to buy it." The problem is, I love doing yard work, but not anymore. I'd rather play golf or something like that. Even though I think I'm nineteen, I'm not. So, we've looked at several developments to downsize, but most of them are very expensive, over four hundred thousand dollars. We looked at the one down Providence Road, and it was just less house for more money. And that's ridiculous. So, we were excited to hear about Manor Grove. And I think it's something that Waxaw needs. Affordable housing, a great place to live. And we, we don't want to live in Charlotte, and we like the town of Waxaw. So, thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Diane Georges?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. My name is Diane Georges, and I do live at nine oh six Stackhorn Lane, Waxaw. We love our house in Hunter Oaks, but it's got to the point now that it's just too much yard work to do, and I do most of it, like he doesn't do. So, therefore, I am ready to live in a small. And we don't need more space, and we don't need the maintenance work to do anymore. So, we have learned through Manor Grove, through an advertisement from the following community process, and we would like to have this go forward so that we could have the opportunity to maybe move there. We might be the second person to live there. So, you know, I would just like that to see go forward. And someone else, eventually, you all are going to be old, and you're going to want a place similar to that to live. So, please think about that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, I think it's Lucid?
Folks, my name is Tom Lucid. I live at twenty-two twenty-five Sunny Valley Court, Indian Land. My wife and I recently moved from Pennsylvania to be closer to our children and our grandchildren for a better cost of living as well as better weather. Pennsylvania's a little rough at this time. I've sold all my snow-removal equipment completely. Anyways, we're looking for a better cost of living and better weather. We never thought that we'd have such a tough time finding a ranch home under three hundred thousand. As a result, we purchased an existing home at Legacy Park located in Indian Land. However, we'd like to be closer to downtown Waxaw. We just love spending time walking around, shopping, and enjoying everything it has to offer. I'm hopeful that you do support senior housing in Waxaw, as like everyone else has said, it's very much needed. And as far as traffic, and I listened to the traffic study that came about here, we tend to, as seniors, avoid heavy traffic hours. And as far as mileage-wise, we're limited to less mileage today, travel mileage, even in the areas that we live. I have two late-model vehicles. One of them is a twenty-fourteen, and it has only twenty thousand miles on it, which tells you a little bit about how much mileage we drive in this area. Our other vehicle, the twenty-fifteen, has, has less than, has about thirty thousand, I think, on it. And most of our travel is, we're very aware of traffic conditions, so we avoid people that are traveling for school and, and other areas, like even shopping areas, being seniors. Just try to stay out of the way of the major part of the community. And I think that's very helpful. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit on that, in addition to some of the notes that we did make. But it sounds like you got a good prospect here, and I hope to one day be considered number three for it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Joanna Lucid?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Jo Lucid, Joanna Lucid. And I currently live, same as my husband, twenty-two twenty-five Sunny Valley Court, Indian Land. I've read a few clips on Facebook regarding growth in the local area, including Waxaw, Indian Land, Fort Mill, and so forth. I can truly appreciate everyone's concerns about the strengths that growth can put on infrastructure, schools, and so forth. However, growth also brings a wealth of benefits as well, including new restaurants, retail, medical, road improvements, tax revenue, and so forth. Without homes, small businesses can't survive. I would think that senior housing would be the least intrusive form of growth, as we don't have children going to school anymore, and we aren't rushing around, as my husband said, wanting to sit in traffic around the rush hour that everyone else is traveling. We make our doctor appointments specifically after rush hour in the morning before rush hour begins in the evening. We have moved here to be close to our children and grandchildren so that we could possibly be of help to them and them to us. As we age and have more health issues, that's really important to us, especially to my husband and I. He's a heart transplant patient and requires constant care and has just been diagnosed with cancer. So, for me, it is very important. I am close to my family so that they can help. Grove Manor would supply this for us. Waxaw does not approve, I'm sorry, we want to live in an area that is affordable, that could provide us with everyday conveniences. For those of those, you know, for those of us, Sun City products are well out of our reach. You know, Grove Manor is ideal. Waxaw does not provide us the opportunity today, but hopefully will in the near future as we want to find ourselves moving to Waxaw. I, too, am hopeful that you will support Grove Manor, as we believe it will be a great addition to your town. And just a little note, I was really impressed with the programs where the citizens of this town have been involved. I'm looking forward to also becoming an active participant in your programs if Grove Manor is available to me. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Jaclyn Emanuel?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Emanuel. I'm a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty here in this area. I truly support this project, Grove Manor. As Mike and Nema alluded to earlier, there is a huge deficit of properties that are available in this area for empty nesters and people over fifty-five. His numbers are accurate. I pulled up three hundred thousand and below before I came to the meeting. There's a total of six houses in Waxaw. One of them is proposed for twenty-eighteen, five more are ages nineteen sixty to nineteen fifty-five. So, those properties are not ideal for people, as you just heard speak, because there's a lot of things that they might have to do to them, to fix them up, to rehab them. It's not what they're looking to do in their life with their time right now. Currently, there's a great demand, and there's just not enough supply of these homes for these individuals. I only see positives to this project. They'd add to the tax income. They're interested in their communities, these individuals who are over fifty-five. They're active in their local communities. They come here and they speak to you. They're showing interest in what happens in the community. They add to the local economy by spending their time and their disposable income to, to the communities that they're in. I live here in Waxaw, and I had to direct my own family out of Waxaw to find suitable housing, South Carolina, for my in-laws and for my parents when they came here, because there was just nothing that I could find for them that's a single-story property within their price range. So, I hear from other Realtors, really on a weekly basis, truthfully, that they, there's a deficit of these type of properties, and most individuals have to go to Indian Land or South Carolina areas or somewhere in Indian Trail route to Monroe. And for people who have, you know, younger families here, like myself, it's difficult for them to get to us to provide help or babysitting or anything like that. It's difficult for them to travel those distances, especially if we need them at a rush hour time or something. So, and speaking to the concerns about these properties turning into properties that individuals with children would want to purchase, I, you know, it wouldn't be a smart investment for people doing that, in my opinion, because, you know, it's, it's a very small house for a family. And looking a couple of years down the road, you're going to outgrow that, that, and as kids grow, you kind of want to have a little bit of separation once the kids start to mature. You've got nowhere to go in that house. You're just going to be all, you know, stuck together. So, it's not, I don't, in my opinion, it's not an ideal house for a growing family, for families with young children. So, I really, I support the project. I thank you for your time and for your attention.
Thank you. Phyllis Young?
Hi, my name is Phyllis Young. Good evening. I live in Prescott, and I understand all these people that just came to the microphone and said they want to buy all these great houses, except what's happening on Waxaw Marvin Road. Now, if you don't live there, you don't understand the traffic problem. We moved here from upstate New York in two thousand and six to the Charlotte community. One of the headlines when we were here in Charlotte looking for a home was one with the Charlotte Observer that sixty thousand people had moved to Union County in late two thousand and six. I reviewed and voted for the new commissioners last year and took a lot of time to determine what I thought to be the best pick for the future of our community. I am disappointed with Commissioner's issue on continuing to approve housing communities on the Waxaw Marvin Road without an adequate traffic study on the approved housing additions. An inadequate planning board rule allows developers no traffic study if the number of homes to be approved is below the threshold of a hundred homes, instead of taking the total development that is happening in the area. I want to suspend any more developer approval currently before the town of Waxaw until a total traffic study on this corridor can be determined for improvements to Waxaw Marvin Road and how these improvements would be implemented. This study should also give estimates on delays for access and departure times for the amount of additional traffic of existing homes and homes under development that were pre-approved. Commissioners, you owe this to our community that we will be noting how you vote on this because this is totally out of control on Waxaw Marvin Road.
Thank you, Phyllis. We need to take a quick, five-minute, little recess here, so we'll reconvene at eight-twenty. See you, Martin. Karen Long? Okay. Yuri? Okay, Yuri?
Good evening, everyone. I don't need a microphone, but I live at 4615 Waxahaw Marvin. That is one of the lots that they're purchasing to build this community. From what I understand, they're going ahead with phase one. It's done, it's approved. Does it matter if this one gets approved or not? Correct? So my personally, my question is, is it better for someone else to build at a later date or for them to build directly through Union County and put duplexes there? I don't think so. First of all, this is, this will, you know, taxes will get paid, the community will grow. It's going to grow either way. I own that property. If something doesn't go through, I'll put houses myself on it. So it's going to get built. It's prime real estate. These guys are offering a product that I think is great. There's a lot of people interested in it. And for the people that think Waxahaw Marvin Road has traffic, it doesn't. I've lived on that property for five years. Does not have any, any, very few accidents. Only at one intersection, I've seen two accidents the whole time. So I don't know where they're getting it. I live on Waxahaw Marvin Road, right off of it. I see it out of my bedroom. So my thing is, I don't even know why they're protesting about this, which they can, they have every right to, right? But it's going to get developed either way. Why not have a senior community or adult living community there? Part one's already approved. It's going to be construction anyways. They just want to expand it to a little bigger one. That's it. You know, so I think I'm known, I have known them for a long time, but the little time I have known them, they're great guys. They're local builders. They're not national builders that are going to come in there, destroy things, D.R. Horton, big, huge builders.
Careful, 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 careful. Let's not disparage people, okay?
Okay, we're not going to disparage people. But you see, I've been in construction for practically ever since, as long as I could be working. And I've seen local builders, I've seen big builders, and what these guys bring to the community is great. So my thing is, it's going to get developed, so why not have developed like a group of guys?
Thank you. Okay, and just as a matter of putting into the record from the public hearing standpoint, we by law cannot issue a moratorium because that question came up. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So with that, do we have any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item up. We have old business now. Action on Lindsay Meadows' conditional rezoning district request petition. CD 006722-2017 petition. And Alex Beasting is here and take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be discussing CD 006722-2017, a conditional district rezoning request for Lindsay Meadows. Just a refresher, AMH Development is requesting to rezone 17.381 acres from CU R4 to CDR4, which is a conditional district, single-family residential. The subdivision is to be called Lindsay Meadows and proposes 17 single-family units. So since the public hearing two weeks ago, there have been slight modifications to the plans in response to the discussion. This is the overall plan and I'll dive into those details right now. So the hands-left turn lane from Kensington Drive was originally 50 feet and has now been extended to 75 feet in order to accommodate extra stacking on Kensington Drive and reduce the stacking traffic on Kensington Drive. Also, the entrance could not align with Morehouse Drive because the site is too narrow to allow for the required minimum radius of 150 feet with the location of the floodway and the 100-year floodplain in that area. Having the entrance in this location would also create a dead-end road with a length of 1,070 feet, which exceeds the maximum of 800 feet. Another limiting factor is the existing steep topography in that area. So with that, they added extra detail to the plan that showed the site distances from the ultimate entrance position, Lindsay Meadows Drive. That site distances show that the entrance there meets and exceeds the engineering standards for site distances. So the right site distance is 457 feet, which exceeds a standard of 335 feet, and the left site distance is 408 feet, which exceeds the 390-foot minimum standard. So that's all new information and with that, the requested actions are presented on the screen. Condition one has one minor revision and now reads, "The development shall be designed in a manner that dedicates required right-of-way and allows for the full intersection build-out of Kensington Drive and Waxahaw Marvin Road as generally depicted on the plan titled Interim Design II dated February 3, 2016, prepared by Kimley Horn." Everything else remains the same. And that concludes my presentation.
So just to kind of go back and summarize from the public hearing. 17-acre site, 17 homes. The driveway has been engineered to NCDOT standards. It was not allowed to become out on Waxahaw Marvin, so thus it had to be on Kensington. The applicant has committed to dedicate right-of-way to accommodate future intersection build-out as well as improvements to Kensington Drive and Waxahaw Marvin intersection, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then external sidewalks will be installed on Waxahaw Marvin?
Yes.
And a portion of Kensington as well?
Yes.
Okay. And you just talked about the turn lane. So further questions for Alex?
No, I, they've been set, all my questions have been answered.
I would like Chaplain to clarify for us some of the things that he told us during the closed session about what our legal options are as far as this petition comes.
Is that fine with the board as a whole?
Yes.
Okay, talking about what we call the Supreme Court analysis with the rough proportionality in the nexus, you can only have a development dedicate rough proportionality or really the impact of what they're going to cause. So you can't have a development that has, what we say, minimal impact, dedicate roadway improvements that far exceed the amount of impact they have. It's a constitutional limitation. It's gone all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court and it's called a taking. If you take more than allowed, so you have to have a relationship between what you require as a condition for approval and was imposed on the, on the property owner. So it can't be a huge amount if they aren't going to have a huge impact. And it's called a rough proportionality. It must be pretty close to it and there's never going to be an exact science, but it can't be extremely out of balance.
And I was actually getting at something else originally. It was the idea that we, we don't have a legal right to simply say, "I don't want anything built here."
Correct. There were, there were two issues and I'm sorry. The other one is, if you say nothing is built on that land, then there's a deprivation. The leading case was Lucas and that was a beachfront case out of South Carolina, actually. Went up to Supreme Court, they said, "You can't build a house there because we want these setbacks." And they said, "Well, I can't do anything with my property. It's beachfront, it's a million-dollar lot." So they took it up to the Supreme Court and they said, "By putting regulations, you have deprived all economical and viable use of the property. You can't just say, you can't use it for anything." Now, there's certain areas, if it's in a floodplain or there are other regulations, but if it's buildable property, you can really, you're putting yourself out there, you have to have a lot of findings if you're just going to say, "No, I don't want you to build there."
And do we have any legal standing to deny this request for subdivision?
Just give your, yeah, don't, don't.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to answer that because I don't know how you're going to vote and we may have to.
I just, if that, if it would be illegal to deny it, then I would like to know that before I vote. Get what I'm saying?
The harsh reality, let me, let me, harsh reality here is, is that we would have to find conditions that would disallow any building on here and to date, we have not been presented any.
We have not found any legal standing for that.
Right. The floodplain, all the housing is outside of the flood, floodplain. The transportation is outside of the floodplain. The driveway and all the roadway is outside of the floodplain, correct? And so when you went through that, you found no conditions that would prevent building?
Right, right. All the development is allowed on the property as it is. That's all I needed to know.
I think you would have a legal challenge and it would be.
We would open ourselves up to potential lawsuits.
Well, you've got 17 acres and you'd say there, nothing can be built, but all the designs are showing you can have 17 houses outside a floodplain. So you would be asking these people.
Just wanted that clear.
To not use 17 acres at all that has zoning for it.
Richard Burns? Any questions?
I have a question about the floodplain. After all of this is developed, if it is, how can you tell or what was your findings of how far, if it floods, how far it will come up into someone's backyard? Because there probably is going to be more water once you have streets and runoff than it is now.
We're not allowed to add to water with subdivisions. So when you create the construction of the site plan, you have to accommodate for that extra, like, impervious surface. So that's done through the construction planning documents and we've determined that it would not add to flooding and the floodway is there to capture the existing water. So it wouldn't change the rate.
So it, does it flood now?
I'm not familiar with the site in person on a rainy day.
I'm just wondering, that's 10 acres, if that would be a neighborhood park or green space? If it doesn't flood that often, could, is that possible?
Well, the development's outside of that floodplain area and there's enough open space and wooded area that would capture the runoff or, you know, any potential heavy rain and blow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve CD 006722-2017 with the staff recommended conditions.
Have a motion on the table to approve the petition with the staff recommended conditions. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Would you also like to make the motion to approve the statement of consistency?
So moved.
So we have a motion to approve the statement of consistency as written on the chart. Basically, the rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxahaw is reasonable and in the public interest as it will allow for 17-lot detached, single-family development as recommended by the Waxahaw comprehensive plan for the X1 existing neighborhood sector. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Okay.
All right, and with that, I'll be discussing the subdivision petition, SUB 006723-2017, the preliminary subdivision for Lindsay Meadows. So as a formality, just have to present this slide, which reflects all of the changes in the conditional district rezoning. The plans are identical, so I just wanted to put this up there. And so just with that, the requested action tonight is available on the board.
So these have been presented.
Yeah, there have been no.
Four times now, yeah, there's no, no new news here. Any questions for Alex by the board? Not on entertain a motion.
So moved.
So you move to approve the petition? Okay, okay, there's a motion from Commissioner Burrow to approve the petition, SUB 006723-2017 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next presentation is information only. Max Oliver, Grove Manor Phase Two, major subdivision petition. And Max, just take a couple of minutes because a number of people are leaving. Just a couple of seconds. Do you, do you want to go out the front door? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Max, for the, take it away.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a major subdivision request for a 56-lot home planned residential development that will be based on the conditional district rezoning that was presented before, Grove Manor Phase Two, conditional district rezoning. As mentioned, the site is made up of two parcels, both fronting Waxahaw Marvin Road. Site contains two single-family homes and several agricultural structures. The properties are primarily wooded with some fields and the property's total approximately 20.27 acres in size. As mentioned before, the proposed development is in keeping with the future land use map. The site is currently zoned Union County RA 20, single-family residential agricultural. The proposed zoning is CDR4 PRD. Site is adjacent to both CDR4 PRD and CU R3 PRD developments. This is a subdivision sketch plan, which matches the previously presented conditional district plan. It's just oriented in a different direction. This is Waxahaw Marvin Road here. This would be the Grove Manor Phase One development here. These are the proposed typical house elevations. And this is a recap of the proposed major subdivision request. Staff recommends approval to propose preliminary subdivision plan, SUB 007023-2018. Staff recommends approval to propose preliminary subdivision plan, S U B 007023-2018. At their March 19 meeting, the Planning Board voted to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on the proposed preliminary subdivision plan, S U B 007023-2018. And the requested action at the future meeting is to either approve or deny the petition. The applicant is here, and I can answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
I know there's discussion about age-appropriate, age-restricted. Perhaps staff can go back and work with the applicant in terms of, is there another mechanism that will provide more comfort to this board in terms of making sure that we stay age-appropriate? I don't know what those are, but obviously, that's been a major concern here. And it would be, I think it'd be helpful as we go through the decision process to see what other aspects, and obviously, that would be working with our attorney as well.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Can I have some clarification again on the percentage on the federal legislation regarding the active adult?
You want that question answered now?
If he's able, sure.
So H O P A, H O P A, the Housing for Older Persons Act, is a federal mandate that communities, when imposed, one resident out of 80% of the homes in the neighborhood have to be 55 years or older. That's what it states. Now, if an HOA wants to put additional restrictions on it, they certainly can. But the H O P A Act states, "One resident out of 80% of the homes have to be 55 years or older." It mentions nothing about children. So someone who is 56 years old, regardless of the age of their spouse, they could have children in the neighborhood, yes. But it's the limit, I guess, the demographic that's going to be living in that neighborhood. But to Mr. Burrow's question and point, I don't know if you can ever guarantee it unless you take the harsh measure that says, "We are 100% age-restricted, and we are 100% excluding children from this neighborhood," which I haven't seen a neighborhood do that or a board ask of that in my entire career of 20 years. So that's a pretty harsh step.
Yeah, I understand your position on that. I just wanted to make sure legally, we don't have, there is no age discrimination type of legislation.
No, you can put restrictive covenants. I mean, there are things such as the Fair Housing Act that prohibit discrimination upon the familial status, but if you are an age-restricted community, then you're exempt from those. Somewhere in between, that would need to be researched a little bit. And I think what you're maybe going at is not the 100%, not an 80%, some other percentage, and have that as a condition, and maybe covenants. And still, that would be, any conditions the applicant would have to agree upon because this is conditional zoning, that would be a lender issue. But fortunately, this is legislative, and there's time. And I think that's what the mayor was asking for, everybody to look at these in between the public hearing in this meeting and the next meeting, and see if there's some other ground. And the ground may be the, well, the marketing, but maybe there's something else, something higher for the board, and I think that's what we're looking at.
I appreciate that point. We welcome the conversation. We do. We started this conversation off with, "We're here to be a good neighbor." We are. And we want to do what's right for the town. But we can't have such a harsh restriction that it just, it kills the deal for us. I would respectfully ask, at that point in time, we would like to remove our annexation request, if that's going to be the condition, because I don't think it's fair to the landowner in the event that we don't close. And number one, I know if it has to be 100% excluding children, that we will not be moving forward. But we welcome the conversation, and this week or next week before the actual vote. To see for the middle ground here, we are absolutely open to the conversation.
And thank you for clarifying the removal from annexation if, in that case, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're done with you, Max. Thank you very much. Okay. Last item of new business, Kurt White, proposed ordinance prohibiting parking of vehicle for sale or distribution of goods in the town right-of-way. Guys, are you going to leave, or are you staying? Okay, very good. Thank you. I saw one get up, so, good. I didn't want to gavel you down real quick.
He's on the clock.
Very good. Kurt?
Okay. Hey, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. So tonight, what's before you is an ordinance prohibiting parking of a vehicle for sale of goods in the right-of-way. And before I get started with the actual, the rest of the presentation, I thought it'd be important just to mention a couple points, just for clarity's sake. What you have before you tonight is the latest iteration of an ordinance proposal that's been before you in different forms throughout the past several months, from a work session late in the fall, to some other informational sessions and discussions in the winter months. And at the core, this ordinance is about establishing an approach to right-of-way use that's consistent with a variety of goals in the town, from parking to economic development and some other considerations, and for consistency with some of the state regulations. So tonight, we're going to talk about just that. We're talking about how to regulate food and other vendors in the public right-of-way. And just to add one other, one other point, what is right-of-way? Because I know that, I've just heard various questions, just kind of wanted to find that term so everyone, for the benefit of everyone to understand. The right-of-way is, the official definition is the space available to the public between property lines for the passage of traffic, utilities, infrastructure, other publicly regulated uses. And so basically, it's more often than not, it's the street, and in many cases, it includes the parking spaces, especially in downtown areas. And it, the width of the right-of-way varies depending on the classification of street, but essentially, that's what, that's what we're talking about here. So I wanted to clarify those things before we got started. We're going to go through a couple of examples of the kind of vehicles that we're talking about, and then look at the current regulations. So how does the town currently regulate these kind of uses? And then talk a little bit about the evolution of how we got to the ordinance that's before you tonight. So here's some of the examples when we talk about vendors selling in the public right-of-way. These are vehicles that are licensed by the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles, mobile food trucks, flour trucks, vegetable stands, just some of the examples of the kind of vehicles that this ordinance would impact. So current regulations. Where are we right now today with this kind of regulating this kind of use? Right now, food vendors and other types of temporary vendors are allowed on parcels in the N M X, M S, and T C zoning districts. That's essentially downtown. It's most of the downtown area. The only other one is U N, which is not, it's not currently allowed. So it's currently allowed with the zoning use permit. It will continue to be allowed if this ordinance were to be enacted, because this is the U D O that's regulating that. So we're not proposing any changes to the current ability of these kind of vendors to be able to operate in the downtown area on parcels. Town events, they're also currently allowed with, during town-sponsored events with Events Division approval. And if this ordinance were to be enacted, that also would not change. This ordinance does not change that. In fact, at the upcoming Kaleidoscope Festival, third weekend of May, I believe we have 12 mobile food vendors already scheduled for that. So this would not change that. Now, as far as public street right-of-way is concerned, currently, these kind of vendors are already prohibited in the N C D O T right-of-way. So if we're talking about Highway 75 or South Main Street, if you're talking about 16, they're already prohibited by North Carolina General Statute. Town street right-of-way, they're currently not regulated. So what that means is that there's really no way that we deal with them or don't deal with them in the way we currently have our ordinances. You could have 10, 15, all parked conceivably along one street downtown if they wanted to, and they could stay indefinitely. And that's one of the things that we wanted to look at, and we had these conversations, when these conversations got kicked off. So that's how it stands today. And so we recognized back in the fall that this issue existed with no regulation of the mobile vending in the right-of-way, and we wanted to establish some kind of an approach to right-of-way use that would support the town's existing goals. So starting in October, or a little before, in the fall of 2017, staff presented different variations of an ordinance to the board that was based on several different approaches. We looked at research from other towns. There's actually 14 towns right now that we found in North Carolina that do currently allow mobile food vending in the right-of-way, of town street right-of-way. So there's different ways that different towns go about this. And these are just some of the ones that do allow it. We looked at some research nationwide on how it's handled, and we did get feedback from the Main Street Advisory Board, who were generally supportive of the concept of allowing the food trucks with some provisions in the town street right-of-way. Now, as we had further discussions about it with the, with the board, we started to develop some other kind of constraints that could be imposed to regulate that kind of a use. Because there's, like I mentioned, there's a lot of ways to go about this. Towns have different approaches. Time constraints is something that's often discussed with this type of, with regulating food vendors in the right-of-way. Proximity to other restaurants, permission of owners, and then where, in which geographic locations in the town can they go? So that's what we started with. The evolution of it, though, has, based on feedback that we understand, is that there's really not, at this time, an interest in accommodating them in the Waxahachie context based on the town's current realities and goals. So, and then some of the things that we list here, right-of-way use, parking, and vision and economic development goals. So right-of-way use first, it's true, we're not consistent with state statute and how we're handling town street right-of-way use right now. So the ordinance before you would, would become much more consistent with the state statute for handling this kind of an activity in the right-of-way. And in fact, the ordinance language that we developed is very similar to the state's with just a couple exceptions that we'll talk about in a second. Parking, we know that the number-one complaint that we tend to hear about downtown is parking and perceptions of whether there's enough and where it's located. And so to keep, to keep a high turnover of spaces and to ensure that there's, you don't have people kind of setting up shop for a long period of time, this ordinance would address that as well, at least from a vending standpoint. Now, there's some commercial vehicle concerns we have as well with downtown, other types of vehicles that we'll hopefully be coming forward with in the coming weeks. But this would begin to address some of the parking concerns. We do have a vision, as downtown Waxahachie being the kind of Union County's hub for eating and drinking establishments, we have, to that point, there's 18, if you count all of the eating and drinking establishments, everything from snow cones to, you know, French food downtown, if you count them, it's about 18 in a .1 square mile area. So that's a pretty dense amount of options there. And so this ordinance would also kind of feed into that idea of capitalizing on the options that we already have in the town. So those are some of the goals that we understand as being important for this ordinance. What it would do specifically, it would prohibit the parking of vehicles and trailers in the right-of-way for sale or distribution of prepared food or drink, fruits, vegetables, other types of merchandise. It would also prohibit the placement of those vehicles in the right-of-way in a manner that would obstruct sight distance, so that, in ways that could adversely affect the public view. So what that means is if, when you're coming up to an intersection and you're trying to look left or right to see if there's cars coming, there could be an obstruction that's keeping you from seeing that. Town events would be excluded, as we discussed earlier. So during special events recognized by the town, the, you could still have mobile vendors. And that's not just town events, but special events that are officially recognized by the town. So it could be other organizations who wanted to hold an event, a Food Truck Friday. If the town recognized it officially, then that could be a different situation. So that's the exception there. There's also, I believe I heard a question about, at one point, about would this stop a delivery vehicle from delivering food to a downtown restaurant? And there is a provision in the actual, the full ordinance language that would exempt that type of activity. So it wouldn't prevent a truck from being able to temporarily stop and unload its goods to an establishment. What would enforcement look like? The way it's written, these would be the penalties if someone was in violation of the ordinance. And then it would be police or code, either police or code enforcement could enforce the ordinance. And the effective date would be, as it's written here, it would be June 1st. So give a little over a month for any folks who are, already had plans to kind of get into compliance, and also so that police and staff would have the time to develop tools with which to actually enforce the ordinance in the field. I believe that is all. So you're right, the action before you is that approval of the ordinance that would prohibit the parking of a vehicle for sale or distribution of goods in town road right-of-way. Are there any questions? Or comments? Thank you for the presentation.
Richard Burrow?
I'll start on that end.
No, we'll start over there.
Okay. Comments, really? This is a, for such a simple subject, it's really very complex, because it involves taxes that aren't really paid by food trucks, where brick-and-mortar restaurants pay taxes to the town. To me, it also, the idea of a permit, do we size the permit or set the amount of money on the permit such that we kind of recoup some of that? In other words, if we're giving away a couple parking places, what's the town get for it? Is it 50 bucks, 100 bucks? Is it adequate? Does it compensate for what, say, Maxwell's might pay a year for their property tax, or 701 Main Street pays for property tax? So there are a number of things in my mind that kind of want me to say yes to this. But then there are a lot of things in my mind to say, "I don't want to prohibit food trucks." But I think that we were at a place before where it wasn't quite as organized the first time we saw it, to where now it's just super organized, and the answer is no. And I think somewhere in between that is where a correct answer lies. I mean, I think that when we're doing things like having food trucks at town-sponsored events, are we, you know, enforcing the same rules as sight distance and so forth? Are we putting them, where are we putting them for town-sponsored events? And I guess it really all boils down to the food truck at Dream Chasers. And I'm not sure yet. I'm going to listen to what the other commissioners say and make up my mind, but I want to see Dream Chasers succeed, but I want to see it done in a fair and equitable way to all the other restaurants in Waxahachie.
So let's discuss that.
Okay.
So respectfully, I think what Kurt really alluded to was there's a multi-pronged process here. First and foremost, we have no right-of-way ordinance whatsoever. And right now, we could have 20 food trucks pull up and park in the right-of- And right now, we could have 20 food trucks pull up and park in the right-of-way, and we couldn't move them, and chief could not have police enforce that. So, most municipalities, in the research I did, go through and actually put in place a right-of-way ordinance. And that gets to the commercial vehicle parking, so we don't take up the parking. Then they actually study and look at where does it make sense, if we're going to use selected right-of-way, to actually put food trucks. It has nothing to do with any establishment whatsoever, has everything to do to where does it make sense safely and securely to put a food truck. It may be, I think Raleigh selected two slots out of how much space they have. So, this is really more of a work effort that we're giving to you to bring all this, which you alluded to, we're bringing all these things back that we've never had in place before.
Right.
And that was really the bigger issue. So, I don't agree that this is directed at anybody other than, this is a right-of-way issue that we have to then cascade to all these other things. And Kurt, staff-wise, can't be late in getting these things to us. We have to give them every resource available to get these things teed up and get them back to us, so we have a logical approach for downtown. As Kurt said, they can petition the town to do it on private property. Some have already requested in the downtown area, are going that route. Those are all, those are options. But Kurt's got a lot of work ahead of him to, and I know he's just smiling, that nine o'clock at night, that he's got all this work ahead of him. But it's a cascading effect. It's not just this.
No, I understand that. And that's what I wanted to get at, that this is step one.
Well, I got it for you.
You got it for me. So it's step one in a long process. But I don't want to see it be a long process either, and I don't want to see it perceived as we're closing the door on this issue. What we're doing is opening the door on this issue.
So what kind of timeline would you like to put it?
Next meeting.
They take direction from the board.
That is correct.
So, and it's reasonable to think that by the next fiscal year, that all this could be put in place, maybe. But we should give that to Greg and say, hey, we would like this back to us, could you tell us if this is a reasonable time?
Right. And give him back, give him some specifics, specific direction from this board, not just say, we need an ordinance, give us your best shot. Give him some idea of where we need to go.
Okay. And then, how would you like to do that?
I'd say we should do that in a work session, maybe before our next meeting, in our first meeting in May, where we sit down, hammer out the specifics, so that Greg knows, Kurt knows, people here who are concerned about this know that it is not sitting and dying, we didn't close, like I say, didn't close the door on this. We're actually wanting to come up with a safe, regulated system where we have food trucks that add to Waxall.
Mr. Wesley?
So, there is no problem currently with food trucks, correct? I mean, so far, it's mostly been the one truck by Dream Chasers. So, is there any rush on?
I don't know what you mean by a problem.
As far as?
I'm going to facilitate this, because...
So, we don't have, we don't have food trucks parking all over downtown all the time?
No. But I don't know what the right-of-way safety issue is either, because we've never asked the police department to, all we do is we ask them to regulate it and watch it.
Okay. So what I'm concerned about is the length of time that we would, it would take, if we go ahead and pass this, a right-of-way ordinance, the length of time to get actual regulations in place, can we come up with some type of solution, either that we allow a couple spaces in one of our public lots for these food trucks in the meantime, so that we're not completely saying no to the food trucks until we get the regulations in place?
We could come up with anything anybody wants to come up with. But the challenge is, we gave, we directed the board, all of us directed staff to come up and let's tackle the right-of-way. And do we want them to do that? That's what's before us, do we want them to do it or not? Do we want them to tackle the right-of-way? And after that, do we want them to tackle everything else? Because it's, to me, it's that simple. Tackle right-of-way, safety, parking, commercial parking, which is also a problem. Where could we put, because we really don't have a recommendation from the Main Street, and there was not unanimity there in terms of where to put food trucks, or if to put food trucks in the town. There was some suggestions, and it was a split. So, this is, this is on us to really give clear direction, and the first direction was, let's address the safety issue first. And, you know, we can, we can direct Greg to have staff come back with multiple things. But the first step is, do you want a right-of-way ordinance or not?
Well, I am not comfortable passing a right-of-way ordinance without giving some type of option for those who have food trucks right now.
So your answer is you don't want a right-of-way ordinance?
No, I said I want us to come up with some type of...
The, we have in front of us something, a right-of-way ordinance. That, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult. We either take this or vote it down, and, or not, or vote it down.
Okay, so if we, but we do not have a problem right now in town with food trucks. So we could take our time to come up with a good ordinance with good regulation and not rush through it, rather than just passing a right-of-way ordinance. Could we not?
We could come up with anything anybody wants. And I'm not taking sides here. We're not, we haven't been rushing this either. We've been swinging on a damn pendulum. And that's what frustrates me. One minute we say one thing, the next minute we say something else.
Well, some of us weren't on the board in October when this all started.
Doesn't matter.
So I'm just saying...
Doesn't matter who was on the board, let's be clear, just...
No, I'm just saying...
Does not matter who was on the board. We serve as one. We serve in a continual way. In two years, some other people will be on here, and things traverse. This has been, Kurt has taken direction from this end to this end. And as a board, I have no tie to either side. But darn it, we are going to give direction and then take, and then work from there. We gave them direction. If we don't want to follow it, we don't like it, then that's fine. We make a motion to turn it down. But he did what he was directed to do, what Greg was directed to do, and here we are. So, if we don't like it, that's okay. Vote it down. But we got to do something with it and move forward.
Well, I'm not hearing solutions. So I'd like to hear solutions for how we're going to give...
So you want to vote the motion down? Because every one of us asked him to come forward with, to address the right-of-way. So if you don't think we need the right-of-way, that's fine. We vote it down. It's a separate piece of work to go then offer, come up with solutions, because right now, I'm not sure we have the problem defined. We've been going back and forth. But, Ms. Lee?
Uh, okay. I wasn't on the board.
Yep, I know.
But I've been giving my feedback on this for a couple of months, that we've been working on this. I didn't want to fly by the seat of my pants. I looked at this as, how do other small historic towns all over the country handle it? What are the other towns doing? Because we know that issues like this come up, we're small, we're growing, we've talked about even as far as this board, issues come up, or, oh, we didn't have a rule about that. Well, what do other towns do? So, I have this to pass around. This, and there's a cheat sheet on the top here. This is my research over the past two months, two and a half months, of about, I think I put in there about 10 or 11 towns across the country, small historic towns of varying sizes, and how they have their codes. The cheat sheet on the top just gives you a basic understanding, and the codes themselves are actually excerpted in there, in case any, we decide to go back and add additional codes later. There's some great examples in there of how towns do it. What I found was, most historic towns don't allow you anywhere in your historic district, which is not what we're talking about. We have a national historic district downtown, but we're not talking about saying you can't come downtown. Most towns on my list didn't allow you in the right-of-way. One said, on Sundays, they allowed them on the right-of-way, for the most part. They don't want you in the right-of-way because it's not safe. They don't even want you in the historic district, which I don't think is necessarily what we need to be doing here. I found one town that I listed, just for interesting sake, I couldn't find a single code about itinerant merchants or obstructions of the right-of-way at all in Abingdon, Virginia. Otherwise, what I did was I just went and searched travel sites for historic small towns. And I went through the list from multiple sites and searched through everything I saw. And it seems to me that they all started with, let's keep them out of the right-of-way, it's a safety issue, and then they went from there and added additional refinement after. Step one, right-of-way. So, that's all I think we're being asked right here. We've all given our feedback, or been asked to give our feedback, had multiple ample time to give our feedback to Kurt and the staff. They've done what we've asked them to do. Everybody on this board has had the chance to give their feedback. This isn't personal. Anyone who claims it's personal doesn't, maybe they don't understand how this works. This is just a safety issue with one small part that has been brought before us. This is my research, my facts and data, for the rest of you to look at. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Burns?
I've lived in downtown for 28 years. And this is a safety issue, as I see it, in and out every day, sometimes three or four times a day. And Kurt, you said maybe 10 or 15 trucks could have. With all of the hoopla that's happened in the last week, I can see more and more and more trucks coming. We have no ordinance. Where are they going to park? They could park anywhere, right now. They can show up Monday and park from 11:00, anytime, anywhere. And it may very well happen now. So, what do we say? What do we do? We have no ordinance to regulate anything at this point. And now it's out there. So, I can't imagine downtown Waxall with 10 or 15 food trucks. One or two, okay with that. But not to be given one business the opportunity to have that truck and not another business. How many businesses want one that may bring more people to their door? So I am in favor of the ordinance as a step one, and then come back, you know, as we've asked you to do, and come back and maybe start making some amendments to allow certain places, once we do some investigation of where the best places would be. But right now, we have nothing. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Protam?
Now, with this ordinance, the trucks would still be allowed on private property, correct? Are ice cream trucks exempt from this ordinance?
Could you answer the first question?
Sure. So, they would be allowed on private property in the three zoning districts that we mentioned, NMX, MS, and TC. That's where the UDO currently allows them. So that, we're not proposing to change anything with that. So that's just downtown, essentially. And then regarding the ice cream trucks, so, there's a difference between parking and parking in the right-of-way and waiting for people to come up to you, or stopping and unloading something, standing in the right-of-way, some might say. And the town has a peddler's ordinance already, that actually would, ice cream trucks would probably fall under the peddler's ordinance. So no, this is not, this is not in trying to get at ice cream trucks.
Does this affect any amenity centers, you know, clubhouses or anything in any way? You know, if the town controls their streets, say, would it control, for instance, a parking lot where the pool area or something is? Would that be affected if they decided to have a vendor, food truck or something, come into that community as well?
This ordinance only addresses town-street right-of-way.
Town-street right-of-way. Okay. Just one, make sure. All right. Now, in passing this ordinance, it was suggested by Commissioner Burrow that we have a work session possibly before our next meeting, to develop something that would then be more encompassing, you know, to have a place or area, say, for trucks to park or to be located. Is that something that we can do or look to do?
Well, I think we would defer that to Manager Ferguson, and we'd have to be specific with the request. My personal recommendation would be, get some advice from Legal and Kurt in terms of what a comprehensive ordinance is, so we structure the work session. Because I don't know of any work session that's going to succeed if we go in with the, let's hammer it out, approach. We got to, we got to have content that's well researched and the like. So with that as a backdrop, you know, what's reasonable, do you think?
Two comments. One is that the work session for the first meeting in May is already scheduled for the budget presentation. So that probably would not be a good evening for that conversation, given that it seems like it might be more encompassing than what we're talking about tonight. The second is, I believe that we probably need some clarity as to what number of issues we're trying to address, if we're, if we're moving back in a direction of a comprehensive community preservation-type ordinance, or multiple ordinances that we roll into one action. Because I think this, tonight, is in response to trying to break up some of those into smaller pieces and bring them forward as they're ready. So if we're going to address obstruction of sidewalks, commercial vehicles and parking spots, sale of merchandise in commercial or in parking spots, we just need to know what that list should include, before we can really know how much time would take to thoroughly vet those research options and then come back.
So would it be possible, I'm under the assumption or the impression that you've dialogued, you started a list, Kurt has a list, maybe we could use that as a starter to get that out to the board quickly and say, what else to add? And then please push back on us in saying we're getting too broad with it. Keep it focused on the topic at hand? Is that a reasonable approach to get the ball rolling this week?
Yeah, I think, you know, one question is, are we just focused on issues that deal with the right-of-way? So that may be parking and sidewalks. If it gets broader than that, then I think that starts getting back to some of the other...
Right.
Although, I'll say that placement of trash cans in the right-of-way, for instance, was another thing that we talked about as part of that community preservation ordinance. So we need some clarity as to, whether we're back to the entire spectrum of what was under that original conversation, or whether there's a more narrow focus, or exactly where we're chopping it up. Because I think that's what we're struggling with a little bit, is this is one piece of that, but we're really back talking about more, which is sidewalks, commercial parking, and designated parking spaces. So I guess just, what are the parameters?
I have an additional thought. I know that it's very difficult to get all these little things out of the way, all these big things out of the way, while we're going through the budget season. And perhaps with this ordinance tonight, if the effective date were extended to the 1st of July or the 1st of August, to give us time to really get all of these other community protective ordinances, either singly or jointly, taken care of, we might do better. I don't like doing something with a promise to have a solution, when we don't, haven't committed ourselves. We have to draw some kind of line in the sand to make ourselves perform as you're asking. But June 1st may be way too early to get all that done.
I'm confused. But, June 1st is too early, I'm sorry, to do what?
June 1st is the effective date of the ordinance if we pass it. My thought is, extend that effective date to give ourselves time to deal with this ordinance and any others that may be part of it, or be, you know, impacting it as we go. I don't see us getting, we're at the end of April already. We have the month of May, and we have a budget to deal with also.
So, okay, July 1. So, okay, July 1st. That's certainly a possibility. Maybe a place in my mind to start is where the collective staff team was really started, started at one point in time, and then it got, it got a little sideways. But it defined mobile food units. In the right of way ordinance, what's the purpose? What is a mobile food unit? What is the permit required? What's the investigation of the applicant, the permit fee, the duration? Where in the right, what right of ways are acceptable? Compliance with all other obligations? Easy for me to say. Regulations, operating locations, which where? I mean, if we're worried about all right of way, we can limit it and then prohibited conduct. That note that's out there, that I saw today, maybe that's a place to actually send it to us and say, is this starting to get at the solutions even with the right of way ordinance in place? Then you back to some of the solutions around it. Doesn't take away from the right of way ordinance that is a safety issue first and foremost. That's why we put that, put that out there. But this gets to, it forces us to look at it in a very positive way to say, hey, are these the right things? Does this provide solutions? And then you can tell us whether or not we're making it too big. And I would encourage you to push back so we don't make it too big, so we get it done. Like you say, we could, we could sneak in parking and commercial vehicles and all, and we can make this thing big, and then we'll swing that pendulum back and say we don't want to do it. Let's just keep it focused on the issue at hand. I understand what you're saying, make the deadline for the right of way coincide with the fiscal year, but get all this done, perhaps it's feasible, then you got a full, full solution, but we also have the safety addressed too. Because I don't want to lose sight of the fact that that's where that issue came up from. That, that's how that arose more than anything. Nothing to do with anybody else.
I feel like maybe we should address the safety issue first, and then, I mean, if you look through some of the codes that I excerpted for you, oh, you might find additional things that you want to add after the fact that might be very useful. As I said, some of these cities have amazingly detailed codes. Savannah has an amazingly detailed code. So, there might be step twos and step threes and step fours that we could add as we go along to refine it. But we have a safety question in front of us.
I think with what you've just handed us tonight, it didn't give us ample opportunity to review any of this.
Of course, and that's why I wrote a cheat sheet on the top, too.
Okay. Well, we need to review this as we do other documents beforehand. So, I would not be reviewing this right now to make a decision based upon what's been handed out. But if we allow additional time to address what Mayor Maher has just stated with everything else and consider all the other pieces without becoming too broad, then I think that that's a better step. And then we would still be able to address the right of way, safety issues, and the smaller concerns that are also involved within the steps of putting out this ordinance so that it meets, you know, the needs of all, as opposed to, you know, being too narrow and, you know, not taking into concern other factors.
I guarantee you, no matter what ordinance we pass, we will not meet the needs of all. Some, we will, we're going to, this is, as Commissioner Burrow said, this is a very complex topic that's going to have a lot of piece parts to it. So...
I have additional comments, too.
I have a question, too.
Respectfully.
Okay, let's, let's stick to some order here. So, go ahead.
Okay. I understand the need for the right of way ordinance, but I do feel as a town who is focused on economic development, that we should not be stifling capitalism and entrepreneurship in the meantime. And I feel that we should provide, you know, two spaces or whatever we feel is needed in our public lots then to allow for a food truck to be there until we come up with a reasonable solution.
Okay. Commissioner Burns?
Possible case scenario. Monday at lunchtime, five or six food trucks roll in, and they park where they want to park until July 1st. There's taken up maybe two or three spaces. They have a garbage can there, they have the generator blasting. What are you going to do?
Right. The current, there's no tools currently to enforce any action in a situation like that, that you're describing, yeah?
And on the weekends, it could grow five, 10, 15, 20. I don't know that that would happen, but it's a possible case scenario that it could happen. We have no ordinance, and it's just out there cluttering up downtown with that many.
Right.
So, what would you do?
Currently, it, we, unless, unless they were violating some kind of a traffic, existing traffic, safety regulation that the police would enforce, then no, there is nothing that we could actually do if that happened.
Not even if there's a site distance, which is, the biggest thing is safety.
It, the police would have to interpret that, I believe, as it's currently written.
Okay. So, is the issue here now safety because we're talking about right of way? Or are we just talking about multiple food trucks? Because if we're, if we're saying they're still allowed in public, or in private lots, there could be five trucks allowed in a private lot downtown. So, are we concerned, are we concerned about safety, or are we concerned about how many food trucks we are having downtown?
The ordinance in front of us is about right of way and safety. That's the only thing that's in front of us. The discussion that Commissioner Burrow started was to, we need an all-encompassing set of ordinances around food truck. Fair enough?
Right. As opposed to just no?
Yeah, exactly. So, two separate issues. The third element of, of, they're allowed on private property, and so I don't know where we would be stifling that at all. That's a process that's in place, correct? I mean...
Correct. They're allowed on private property in those zoning districts.
Right. And I've raised the question with Kurt, Greg, and Dennis yesterday about economic development, and that's not been, come forward as an economic development strategy for the town up until today. What it has come up with is this a placemaking solution for the town of Waxahaw. And that's a fair thing for the Main Street team to look at and voice, but, but from a economic development standpoint, they can't answer that question. We don't have sales tax information. We don't have any of that stuff. Back to Commissioner Burrow's point, it's very complex. Certainly, you don't want to stifle entrepreneurs. That's what we do with the Waxahaw Entrepreneurs Center. I'm, I'm sure that if somebody wanted to ask for a permit and perhaps use the NIVENS price, that the town will look at that and decide what, what they would want to do with that from a staff standpoint. Don't worry, Kurt, don't worry. I'm not trying to put pressure on you, but those requests are things that they are asked to do on a regular basis if they come forward. So, so, those are doable.
Kurt, how many private lots are there in the downtown area?
That, that would allow total parcel number, number of parcels?
Well, I'm trying to think of where there would be private lots.
Room for them?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, I haven't counted off the top of my head, but anything in the MSTC or NMX that, where you would have space. So, if there's any kind of a, a lot of the buildings do fill up their entire lot, at least in the historic core. But there's buildings up and down 16 and west North Main who have some space. I don't know the number of them.
You could go up, you could go up Route 16, and they are talking about it. All the way up to the Shell Station on either side. And on the other, on the side opposite of the Shell Station even further, if they so choose.
Right.
But, or choose to. But certainly, that is, that is doable.
Or behind the buildings on west South Main, east South Main.
Correct.
You're, I was going to pull the zoning code, but you're quicker because you're up there. It says allow a zoning use permit. Is that the, a supplemental permit that they have to go through and get like a...
It's, it's an existing permit. Yeah, it's how we regulate temporary...
Okay, it's a temporary, okay. It's not a zoning approval like we have with supplemental conditions where you have to get a conditional use. Okay. I want to make sure that wasn't the case, because that would be a two-month process.
Sure.
We're not going to go, we're, we'd go, what do we want to do with it?
Regardless, you've got work to do.
Just may ask this of you and Chaplin. Can I make a motion to approve this ordinance with an extended effective date as of July 1st, 2018, as opposed to June 1st, 2018?
Absolutely.
Give us the time, and just I'll ask Manager Ferguson, is July 1st realistic, or is that too fast? I know it took us three years to get rid of a couple of parking places, but what's a good date?
I honestly don't think July 1st is enough time, given that you've got the budget and the possibility that you're going to have the UDO in front of you.
Okay.
And that's, that's still to be determined how much work that's going to take during the summertime. So, I, I think, you know, you've got probably three options, is do nothing tonight, perhaps consider the ordinance that was presented, which is to do away with parking in the right of way, or go back to the original proposal from October that, as modified, that prohibits it to some degree until you can decide if that's the final answer or not. That's the three that have been studied. I'm not sure that we're able to get into anything else before taking some time. If there are other options out there that want to, that we need to look at, we need some time to do that. But those are the three that have been actually considered. And I think that the consensus was that the do nothing option, time has come to an end, that there's got to be some solution so that there's got to be some constraints on it at some point, so...
Well, I actually prefer the initial ordinance because it has, at least allows for food trucks currently. And those are the kind of things that I was hoping we could get in place, so I didn't even realize that was still an option. Is that still an option?
So, here's, here's where we are as a board. We gave direction to Kurt and staff. They came back with this. If we don't want this, then we vote it down. If we do want it, then we vote it up, and we give additional direction, ala what you're talking about, Commissioner Burrow, to staff to come back with something and get a reasonable timeline from them based upon budget. But that's where we are.
In the interest of, of giving Kurt an answer, one way or the other, a move that we approve the, the motion as written so that we can at least vote on it, or the other.
So, we have a motion to approve the ordinance as...
As presented by Kurt in the flyer that was handed to us.
Presented in the flyer. I'm not sure, was the flyer posted, sent up to the, the addition up to? Okay, good. Okay, so as presented, both on I compass and what was given to us, which added the statement about distribution to it. So, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of prohibiting, which is what the motion is about, so I want to make sure that you're voting in favor of a no, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so, the motion does not pass, so we continue.
I have an answer.
There you go.
And as, as far as next, kind of next steps, I heard a lot of...
I think my suggestion to you on next steps is take the ordinance that, and the modifications... Could we have some quiet, please? Please? Could we take the ordinance that was originally written, the modifications that were made to it, because you got some very good modifications to it? Get it out to the board quickly so we can comment on what it is, and then push back hard if we stray too far. Okay? Make sense? Okay.
All right, thank you.
You okay? Is that clear?
That works. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, reports, Commissioner reports. Mayor Protem?
Several, oh, Mayor Maher, Town Manager Ferguson, myself, Commissioner Westlick, Commissioner Burrow, we attended Central Council of Governments Regional Conference on April the 12th. They had several workshops for us to attend. One of the workshops which I attended was regarding creative ways to engage your community. And it talked about open street festivals and fairs where people could use them to walk, bicycle, dance, play games. It wasn't the typical selling of wares or vendors, but it was just more of big block parties and street parties with different zones for arts and science, family, green zones, wellness zones, something to bring the community out, engage the community, let them have fun. Block off in Charlotte, I know they're having one on April 29th. They would block off miles, but, you know, in our case, maybe we could just do a couple of blocks or a couple of streets where things could be set up, or, you know, just engage the community in fun activities and family activities, you know, health things for everyone to come out, enjoy, and just have fun.
Commissioner Burns? Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Westlick?
I do. I have some reports from some things I've attended. On April 11th, I went with Town Manager to, with, went to the Incident Command System training. And just one thing, I wanted to let the citizens know that they are recommending adding the Ready NC app, which includes emergency and road information, and also signing up for Code RED to get emergency alerts, which I know the town did publicize maybe a year or so ago, but I think it would be good for us to publicize that again. Also, at the CAG conference that I, we, most of us went to, I just want to touch on a couple of the breakout sessions that I attended. I was the only one that went to the one called Preparing Your Community for Autonomous and Connected Vehicles. And while this seems very far-fetched, our state and national planners are actually seeing that over the next 15 years, we will be shifting to automated cars and subscription services. And the amount of vehicles we will be driving will be cut in half because people will be using services like, like the Google subscriptions for the automated cars. And so, our engineers are now going to be shifting thoughts on how we prepare for transportation in the future. They're saying that we should be able to continue to use the infrastructure we currently have. There won't be changes to that. There will be a reduction in congestion and accidents, and reduced need for parking lots, parking garages, and garages and homes due to this cut in people having vehicles. So, it's, it's really interesting. It's something for us to think about as when we plan for transportation out in the future, to know that this is coming and could have an impact. Another class I went to was on the regional economic development. We had a presentation of the Amazon, what was presented to Amazon for, to get that, them coming here to Charlotte. We did not make the shortlist on that. I'm kind of surprised. But one thing it did show was the reason, main reason we did not get Amazon on the shortlist is because we do not have the workforce, the tech and labor workforce. And so, that, again, shows the need for us to continue to support ways for us to develop that type of workforce here in Waxahaw through, I think it's great, we're getting the Apprentice Academy, continue to work, you know, with something like SPCC to make sure we have the workforce for Waxahaw to attract those types of businesses.
Okay, we are moving right along. We have general public comments. Bonnie Rousinko, she left. Mary Sargent, she left. Sharon Miller.
I have a live one. Hi, y'all.
How are you?
I'm doing great. I'm not a great public speaker, but I'm a passionate speaker. So, anyway, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Commissioners, I would like to make a complaint to the Town Board. I live five minutes from my job, which is in Waxahaw, and it takes me maybe 10 to 15 minutes to get to my job. I live on Howie Mine Road, and you know... I live on Howard and Mine Road and you know, traffic is terrible right there. So I accept that fact that we got terrible traffic. So anyway, when I come out of my, my road, I come down North Providence Road. Okay, y'all know that's like a cut through for everybody. So every day it's like a battle trying to get through there because there's a truck that sits in the road. Well, I spoke to one of the policemen about this truck and I've been told that the homeowner has been warned to move the truck, but they aren't moving it. The only reason I'm complaining is because two days in a row, I've almost been sideswiped. Someone trying to race around that truck. It's a danger for that truck to be in the road every day. And I know she may not have, the homeowner may not have room in their drive, but as far as I'm concerned, she needs to make room. Okay, I had a car in my yard and I was told by the zoning board that I had to move the car. I was given so much time to move the car. And I was threatened with fines if I didn't move the car. I had to apply, I mean, I had to do what I had to do to get the car in my yard. And I don't see why, for months, this car has been sitting in the road and nothing's been done about.
So would you be so kind to give the specific information to the town manager so he could, he could work with police chiefs since they're both here? Hopefully work out, work out how we can best solve that.
Okay, thank you, Coach. It is going to be an accident if it, because it's like a race trying to get through there in, especially in the afternoons at 5:00 o'clock and everybody's trying to get down that road. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heather, Heather Weiss?
Oh, I see, I wasn't.
Oh, no, now what? Now what? Now what? Now what?
Well, this is not exactly for me, but coming down that road, it's fencing on that road, which is not supposed to be fencing on that road. Out in front of Butch Kelly's house, that fencing is not, because I'm, I think I'm right about this, but I'm not sure if I'm wrong, tell me. But so much.
I would never tell you you're wrong, but if you would sit down with Greg and give both instances, because that's really the, the town code and he'll work, he'll work through that with you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Heather?
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. You know, I'm a resident of Waxaw. I've lived here for 26 years. I have been here a long time. My parents moved down here when I was 18 years old. And I think that we can all say that Waxaw has changed a lot, mostly within the past few years as far as traffic goes and getting around Waxaw, getting in and out of Waxaw is a huge problem. I know that the infrastructure is supposed to be improved in 2023. That's still years away. In the meantime, we all still live here. And my comments really go back to Grove Manor, you know, and any other housing development, not to pick on you guys, but any other housing development that wants to come into Waxaw. And that I understand that people want to move here, but I think we have to think about the people that actually live here, you know? And I can't get up and down Providence Road. I actually work in Monroe. I can't get through Waxaw anymore to get out on 75. You know, I can barely get out of my development. So I think that at some point, I would hope that common sense would prevail and that even if it means that we decrease the housing, like I know phase one is approved, if phase two, you know, if they build under Union County standards, it gives us less houses. I would hope that that's the way that we go while we give our roads and infrastructure time to catch up to help the people that actually live here. Not people that want to move here, but people that have been here because I am a resident of this town. I'm not someone that wants to move here. I actually live here. And no one can speak better on the traffic problems of this town than the people that live here.
Does anybody else have any other future business or would I, I'd be happy.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Follow us in favor.
Aye.
Thank you for not giving me too much of a hard time today.